We're live. Good evening. I would like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning for Tuesday, March 15th, 2022. If everyone could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, if everybody could make sure their cellphones are on vibrate or mute would be appreciated. Will, no public notice. Okay, so our... Does somebody have their phone on back there? If you could, please turn it off or step into the lobby. Okay. I'll call the meeting to order 7:00 PM. Our first item is public participation. Is there anything from the public that somebody would like to speak on that is not on our agenda tonight, would like to bring it forward, now would be the time? And I'll remind, well, there shouldn't be any other public speaking other than that. So at this time, hearing and seeing no public participation, we'll move right into new business. Our first item is the PZC-sponsored text amendment, adding Section 1.4 residential moratorium on single-family subdivision and special exception permits for housing to Article I introductions/districts. Michelle, is there anything?
Thank you. Just, you did receive in your packet a draft approval condition or text amendment, if you will. Highlighted in yellow are some suggested items based on an expiration date, a year from implementation if you were to adopt it. And then in yellow are some of the items that came out of the presentation of items to address for your consideration and discussion this evening. The underlined items, we had had a draft of this, the underlined items, I just bring your attention, were added in, the first one being objectives of providing diverse and affordable housing options, and then in the last one, adding zoning regulations permitting, those were just in addition to a draft you may have seen before. So you should have the latest draft with a 3/27/22 date, which is 10 days after a publication in the event you were to adopt it.
Okay, great. Jeff, any?
I have no comments.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Commissioners, this is on for discussion action. Commissioner Foley?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Planning and Zoning sponsored residential housing moratorium amendment with the following conditions. Number one, the Planning and Zoning Commission finds that the zone text is in conformance with the town plan of conservation and development. Number two, the effective date of the zone text amendment is 3/27/22. Add Section 1.4 residential moratorium on single-family subdivision and special exception permits for housing to Article I introductions and districts. The Planning and Zoning Commission has planned carefully the growth of the community and has guided the development of residential areas within the town into neighborhoods. Recent legislation regarding multifamily housing, accessory apartments, coupled with the need to create more affordable housing, and the commission's growing dissatisfaction with the environmental impacts of the lots yielded through open space subdivision and interior lot regulations warrants a moratorium until the Planning and Zoning Commission can fairly assess and revise the zoning regulations as to subdivisions and housing that will fairly meet the objectives of the legislation in the town's planning, plan of conservation and development. The Planning and Zoning Commission hereby declares an immediate moratorium on all application for approvals of single-family residential subdivision or re-subdivision, which creates three or more lots, and any special exception permits for any single-family duplex or multifamily residential housing. Any housing units or general plans for housing that have been already approved prior to the effective date of the moratorium shall not be affected. The expiration date of the moratorium shall not exceed 12 months from the effective date of adoption unless extended by the Planning and Zoning Commission expires 3/27/23. No applications will be accepted or heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and no approvals will be given by the Planning and Zoning Commission for new housing units during this period. During this period, the commission will investigate, first, number one, incorporating affordable housing requirements and regulations for multifamily duplex and single-family developments to further the objectives of providing diverse and affordable housing options. Assess the environmental impacts of lots created as part of current open space subdivisions to determine changes appropriate to create more usable residential lots, to review bulk requirements of residential zones, and to determine appropriate changes needed to further housing goals, and review lot criteria, bulk requirements, and other zoning regulation permitting for interior lots to ensure that they are meeting the original intent and provide adequate environmental and aesthetic protections.
Okay, Commissioners, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion, questions, comments? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Cavignero?
Nay.
Commissioner LeBlanc? Commissioner Foley?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
No.
Commissioner Dexter?
Yes.
Commissioner Viteri?
No.
Chairman Passakonas?
Yes.
Four to three.
So the motion passes four to three. Okay, our next item of business is Application 22-01P, 25 Talbot Lane Site Plan. Okay, I'll turn to our town staff, our town planner, Michelle Lipe.
Chairman, the first order of business tonight would be to deal with your intervenor petition and making a decision on that. Based on how that decision goes, I do have draft approval conditions that I'll distribute to the commission at that time, and we can go over them at that time. But their basis, a lot of them were what we had on the record at the last time that we moved this public hearing, or the action on this item, as well as some other conditions that came up during this public hearing discussion. So I'll have those distributed when we get to that portion.
Okay, great. So at this time, I'm going to put it out to the floor on whether or not the intervenor met their obligation regarding the proving that it would substantially harm, likely to cause the unreasonable pollution impairment or destruction of the public trust in the air, water, or other natural resources of the state of Connecticut, and find feasible alternatives. So we should take a vote on this, on whether or not, if anybody would like to discuss anything regarding that, now would be the time. Or if someone would like to make a motion on whether or not the intervenor met their burden. I see Commissioner Wagner?
Well, I think in a past similar motion, we interpreted the environment of the state to be more than just the local environment or impact on neighbors and such. So I guess I'm trying to recall if that was, you know, what does it mean by the environment of the state of Connecticut? Maybe, Michelle, you can explain that to us.
So I think you had your intervenor petition, and at that time, you reviewed the criteria that the applicant, or I'm sorry, the interveners put forward, and you had identified things like air pollution as being something that you, you know, it kind of tells you pollution impairment of the public trust in the air, water, and other natural resources are the items that you're focusing in on. At your last decision, you did not support the intervenor petition, if you don't recall how the vote went on that. It was not supported at the last meeting. Again, there was a different petition filed this time with different, with additional information submitted, so you'd be acting on, again, it's the environmental aspects of the application.
What happened to the vote that we took in the last, during the public hearing?
At the last public hearing, you did not support the intervenor, you did not make a finding that they had supported evidence on the record to support the intervenor's stance.
I'm actually referring to a week ago. We took a vote.
You accepted the petition at the meeting, and the chairman went through items in the petition that would be considered. It was a verified petition that was submitted.
So maybe I'll make a comment. I'm finding that although there are serious issues with respect to the neighborhood in this application, I don't see that this is impacting the environment of the state of Connecticut.
Okay. Any other Commissioners want to weigh in? I do feel with everything that's come forward throughout the hearing, that there are environmental impacts, and one of those being the placement of the snow. When you remove snow for a project like this, you can't just put it anyplace. It's not allowed to be put into the retention, detention basins, it's not allowed to be put into the wetlands. The applicant said, oh, we're going to put it here, we're going to put it there, but they didn't have what I figure is a satisfactory plan, which is the language in the regulations. So if somebody does haphazardly start removing snow, and they're desperate, just get it out of there because we got a foot of snow, and they start putting it into wetlands, that is bad for the environment. And I think that is likely to cause the unreasonable pollution. So I don't know how everybody else feels, if there's anybody else who wants to speak. Commissioner LeBlanc?
Yeah, I concur with both of you so far with all this, with the intervenors. One of the biggest things I'm concerned with is the amount of diesel exhaust in the area. This has been brought up on numerous occasions, and we haven't really had any answers or comfort with what was presented to us regarding that. So I do stand by that, that it is certainly an environmental issue and an impact that's huge on the neighbors.
Okay. Commissioner Wagner?
I guess I appreciate your consideration of the snow, and I would change my opinion based on that. As to the diesel exhaust, maybe this location, we may feel is inappropriate for this type of a facility, but this type of facility is going to be needed somewhere. So I'm less inclined to consider the diesel exhaust, but I think you've convinced me with respect to dumping snow into the waterways that then would lead into the Connecticut River and other wetlands.
Okay. Commissioner Foley?
And it's not just the, just the snow alone. I mean, our winters as of recent has been more of ice situations where the use of ice melting treatments and that material will find its way into the tributaries. And on an area with this magnitude of asphalt, that's another, you know, another issue for the environment.
Any other Commissioners? Is there anyone who would like to make a motion on, or I could, I can just make a motion, or not a motion, I will call the question on whether or not the Commissioners feel that the intervenor has met their burden. So all those who feel that the intervenor has met their burden, please reply aye. Aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, who feel that the intervenor did not meet their burden? Okay, I, all I heard was aye, so at that point, based on...
Chairman, should you do a roll call, just to make sure you have the vote?
Okay, sure. Could you call roll, please?
Commissioner Cavignero?
Aye.
Commissioner LeBlanc? Commissioner Foley?
Aye.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Dexter?
Aye.
Commissioner Viteri?
Aye.
Chairman Passakonas?
Aye. Okay, so it's unanimous. Okay, so based on that, I'll let Michelle pass out her paperwork. Not much more. Now, the intervenor has provided evidence that substantiated that the number of trucks anticipated will cause the air quality issues, the size of the development close to the wetlands, and stockpiling of snow will be harmful effects on the wetland area. So feasible and prudent alternatives of a smaller building footprint with less impervious surface, specifically by eliminating parking in the wetlands and upland review area. This would also eliminate snow shelf areas from the wetlands and upland review areas resulting in less potential impact on the environment. So, right now, do we have a motion? Commissioner Wagner?
In order to get things moving, I'll make a motion to approve. This is a motion to approve Application 22-01P, 25 Talbot Lane Distribution Facility. And the applicant, there are standard conditions, but the approval is for a site plan approval for a 359,640 square foot distribution facility on 30.37 acres of property, on property located at 525 Talbot Lane, 475, and 551 Governor's Highway I Zone. Based on the commission's finding that the intervenor has demonstrated that the project is likely to cause unreasonable pollution, the site plan shall be modified to the feasible and prudent alternative of a smaller building footprint with less impervious surface. Specifically, this reduction is to be accomplished by eliminating proposed building and parking areas in the regulated wetlands and upland review area. This would also eliminate snow shelf areas from the wetlands and upland review areas resulting in less potential impact on the environment. Along with this are standard conditions, 1 through 13, but specifically Condition 3, this application is subject to the conditions of approval of the Inland Wetlands Agency Conservation Commission, including bonds in the amount of $50,000 to ensure compliance with the erosion and sediment control measures, and $100,000 to ensure establishment of storm order system and wetlands mitigation. A landscape bond in the amount of $75,000 is, this is Condition 4, a landscape bond in the amount of $75,000 is required and must be submitted prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy if work is not completed. I don't think there's anything else I need to read out of that. And these are the conditions that are unique to this application. All truck queuing shall occur within the site boundaries, no truck shall park on Talbot Lane or on Governor's Highway waiting to enter the site. Signage shall be maintained along the public roadway, Talbot Lane, indicating no parking, standing, or queuing. The site plan shall be modified to reduce the number of overhead doors and parking spaces on the water, westerly side of the site so that there is more area for trucks to maneuver with trailers still connected. No truck washing shall occur on site without further approval from this commission. Indeed, combining all four properties into one building shall be submitted. The property address shall be known as 25 Talbot Lane. Condition 18, evergreen trees and/or bushes shall be interpreted within the 50, interplanted within the 50-foot buffer area to enhance the screening of the site and maintain buffer screening over time subject to staff approval. 19, the conservation 40-foot easement shown to include the berm and landscape areas shall include language requiring the maintenance of the plantings in perpetuity to achieve the required buffer screening requirements of Section 6.2.4B. Number 20, the facility operator and operator's security services shall monitor and enforce compliance with all federal, state, and local idling ordinances. Anti-idling signs shall be posted on site in areas visible to truck drivers. The applicant should utilize the state CTDP model design for sign, such signage. Lengthy idling need, needed to provide heating and cooling during driver rest is not permitted, the operator shall provide alternative rest accommodation. Sightline easements, grading easements, and potential failure, potential future right-of-way shall be shown on the plans in the vicinity of the automobile entrance on Governor's Highway to accommodate potential road improvements that the town may consider in the future. Prior to construction and prior to subsequent changes in the occupant or the occupant's use of the facility, the owner and intended occupant shall submit to the Planning Department a description of the activities of the initial or subsequent occupant in sufficient detail to determine that the use is a distribution center and/or warehouse and not a truck or freight terminal. If the Planning Department determines that the use would be considered a truck or freight terminal, the owner shall apply to the concert, to the commission for review and approval of the use prior to construction, initial operation, or tenant or use change. The Planning Department should consider distribution of products to end users or retail sites to be typical of distribution center use, handling of international freight containers, or distribution of inventory among distribution centers, warehouses, and truck or freight terminals should be considered typical of truck or freight terminals. Grading along Governor's Highway shall be able to accommodate a future five-foot sidewalk, or a five-foot sidewalk shall be installed along Governor's Highway frontage. There's, I haven't been giving the numbers. Number 24, there shall be no security gate at the truck entrance of Talbot Lane to allow for the free flow of tractor-trailers on this, to the site. In the event the future owner-tenant wants to accomplish to incorporate a gate, a truck queuing plan shall be submitted as part of a site plan modification, application to this commission. Prior to allowing the use of heavy equipment for clearing or grading the site, the applicant should commission a detailed sweep by professionals on explosive ordinance disposal, EOD, in the areas identified on aerial mapping submitted at the public hearing to ensure absence of any unexploded ordinance. 26, a chain link fence shall be installed to prevent snow storage in the area on the southwest corner of the truck parking area that is reserved to protect rare plant species. 27, a pathway from the southern end of the site shall be provided through the town open space to provide a connection to the existing walking trail created as part of the Constitution Landing Industrial Subdivision. 28, the sign shown on Sheet C-SP1 that reads tractor-trailers no right turn shall be modified to read trucks no right turn. An additional sign shall be added on the Governor's Highway frontage of the site that reads trucks no left turn. 29, the applicant shall comply with all state and local noise ordinances. The timber noise barrier shall be relocated from adjacent to the southernmost loading dock to the south side of the southwest driveway, the southernmost driveway, and lengthen it to suppress noise from additional trucks in addition to a truck parked at the loading dock. Number 30, before any construction or site preparation activities ensue, the applicant shall demonstrate to the town engineer satisfaction with simulations using AutoTurn or similar industry-recognized software that all maneuvers of WB67 trucks of KCRT, which stands for Kingpin, to center rear lengths between 41 feet and 43.5 feet can safely execute all maneuvers needed to enter and leave the queuing area, enter and leave the loading docks, and park and unpark trailers in the trailer parking areas. Any minor site plan revisions resulted from this work shall be shown not to violate bulk requirements of the regulations.
Before I call for a second, could you please address item number 23? Is your motion that just the grading along Governor's Highway, or is it that a five-foot sidewalk shall be installed?
I'm just reading what was typed here. How would you like it to be? Do you want to? I've read both.
I'm in favor of having the sidewalk, that way workers, if they're walking to work, can get there safely.
Okay, then in that case, I'll accept that as a friendly amendment to whatever.
Okay. Do we have a second to the motion? Commissioner Foley, seconds? End the amendment? End the amendment? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would the motioner like to speak on it first?
Okay. I have a lengthy statement which includes a lot of detail about where I'm getting my ideas from. I'm not going to read everything in this statement, but I will summarize each item. So the statement is intended to address many of the user's concerns raised by residents, interveners, and attorneys from the start of my participation, and form the start of my participation in the deliberations, presents most, if not all, of my rationales for a possible approval motion, and final vote on said motion. To ensure complete, a complete application without repeating every aspect of the presentations from the public hearings for Application 2136P, the commission voted to incorporate those discussions in the record for the present application. When I refer to the applicant, I mean the applicant as represented by various members of their team. So I have a series of issues that were brought up by various people. The first one was that we have an unknown occupant. I just want to comment that that's fairly normal in situations like this, and I have no problem approving or not applications with an unknown applicant. There was an issue regarding Mr. Derek Butler's qualifications. The applicant spent some time claiming that he was not qualified. Mr. Butler came back with some very detailed resumes and other information about his qualifications. I'm convinced that he can serve as an expert. There were inadequacies in the traffic report that were brought up during the public hearing, including assumptions about where the trucks are going and so on. I did find that the traffic report had some deficiencies. Unfortunately, I, you know, agree with Attorney Connors' memo, which basically concludes that we, as a Planning and Zoning Commission, cannot consider as part of the site plan review the impact on off-site traffic. So even though the concerns are valid and the impact on Route 5 especially is valid, I do not, I can't consider that as part of my vote. There's an issue about off-site maneuvering. Mr. Butler pointed out that the issues that led to a modification to the driveway entering the site also would apply to trucks entering and leaving Talbot Lane. These trucks will end up having to cross into oncoming lanes. However, again, this is However, again, this is an off-site traffic issue, and I agree with Attorney Connor that this cannot be a consideration. I did provide in the statements some drawings, which basically took the applicant's curve and showed that what Mr. Butler was pointing out is a real issue. I think we can refer that to the, to the state agency when they review the, when they review the traffic report. So now I'd like to get into parking area concerns. Members of the public and commissioners raised the following concerns regarding the design of parking areas. There was an insufficient number of parking spaces, or at least they claimed, they claimed inadequate space for on-site truck maneuvers, a missing required perimeter road, inadequate snow storage capability, which we've already discussed to some extent, and insufficient unloading and loading times considered in the queuing analysis, and I'll address that in a separate section. So regarding the number of parking spaces, table six four three requires one space for one thousand two hundred and fifty square feet, plus one space per employee. The applicant had two different numbers for the number of employees. One was a total of three hundred with roughly one hundred on-site drivers. The other was three hundred plus a hundred and eight permanent driver jobs, which came from their economic presentation. Either way, the required number of parking spaces from, based on the table, would either be six hundred and ninety-six or five hundred and eighty-eight. As noted in Design Professionals' zoning compliance narrative, which is dated twenty, March eighth, twenty twenty-two, the site plan provides a different calculation. It only allows for, uses one hundred employees as the number of employees to determine the number of parking spaces. And it also shifts, applies a different rule for the office space, but the zoning regulation does not distinguish between what portion of the building is office and what's not. They cite three hundred and eighteen automobile spaces, ninety-two reserve automobile spaces, and fifty-six trailer spaces as the only parking on the site. I should have that number added up, but I don't. But it's something like four hundred and sixty-six spaces. Section six four nine allows the commission to reduce the number of spaces if we determine that the lesser number of spaces would suffice. And considering that possible modification, I note that there are only fifty-six parking spaces for trucks, and these are designated as trailer storage spaces. As the applicant stated several times, roughly a hundred of the employees are expected to be truck drivers. These guys will be picking up a truck that's going to have to be parked somewhere, taking it out on the road, and then coming back and having to park that truck again. It's not like they're going to be coming from across the country with a large tractor-trailer. These guys who are stationed at the site will have to have the truck that they're using parked somewhere. Mr. Butler asserted, in response to this, a presentation from Mr. Butler, the applicant asserted that only trailers would be stored in the trailer parking spaces. You may recall that Mr. Butler showed a diagram with tractor-trailers and the tractor parked in some of the, some of the trailer storage spaces. The applicant, and I think this was fair, pointed out that the, the tractors would be removed and just leaving the trailer. However, that leaves a place that the tractors have to park on the site. The use of a hundred as the maximum number of employees on shift at any gun time, any one time, I considered that to be unreasonable. It's not correct to assume that all shifts are equal, plus you have to allow for overlap between shifts. And because of the trucks used by the hundred drivers, however many of them are on-site, those trucks would also add to, you know, more than one space needed to support those drivers. So relative, relative to application twenty-one thirty-six P, the new queuing plan reduces the number of trailer parking spaces from a hundred and four to fifty-six, while twenty-one thirty-six P queuing plan was unacceptable. Fixing it with a very appealing alternative created an unacceptable parking plan. The second issue was on-site maneuvering. Mr. Butler and Attorney Parks presented diagrams that appeared to show insufficient maneuvering space for WB sixty-seven trucks. In revision, and they were using revision two of the site plan, which is all they had when they prepared this, this paper. Mr. Hesketh, who did, did the peer review of the Langen Traffic Impact Study, also reviewed the site plan. With respect to the site plan, he stated that the circulation pattern as designed is capable of accommodating a WB sixty-two design vehicle. So sixty-two truck is five to eight feet shorter. However, during the discussion, I think the applicant did acknowledge that the industry is using a WB sixty-seven trucks, and they also claimed that they had done simulations that showed that WB sixty-seven trucks could perform all the maneuvers. However, one of the points that they made was that between revision two and revisions three and four of the site plan, they had reduced the size of the island between the parking, the truck, excuse me, between the queuing area and the trailer parking from sixty feet to fifty-five feet, and then increased the space for trucks to maneuver coming out of the queuing area. However, if I accept Mr. Butler's diagrams, there's still, it still seemed that the five-foot, extra five feet was not sufficient to address the issue. In addition, Mr. Butler's diagram showed a very difficult maneuver coming out of some of the space, some of the queuing spaces, where the truck had to perform an S curve to get into the access road that goes between the queuing area and the loading docks. So based on Mr. Butler's diagrams, a WB sixty-seven truck would still not have enough room to execute a left turn despite the extra five feet. Regardless of the extra five feet, a truck pulling out of one of the northerly queuing spaces would not have room to evaluate an S turn, to execute an S turn, and needed to turn into that accessway. Truck leading from the accessway would be blocked by a tractor of a truck that had backed into the northernmost loading dock but not yet detached. And then a WB sixty-seven truck pulling a tractor, a trailer, out of the loading dock would not be able to maneuver past an occupied trailer's storage space. During the hearing, Mr. Hesketh challenged Mr. Butler's use of the brush human corp design vehicles and turning radio as coming from an unqualified non-U.S. source, but Mr. Butler also cites Ashto American Association of Highway and Transportation officials exhibits as a basis for his diagrams. I think going on, though, I think where we ended up, where I ended up with that is that as of this time, I don't think the applicant had demonstrated to us that the simulations they did were adequate to deal with all the maneuvers that are required. However, I suggested, and you saw, you heard, that there's a condition in the approval motion that requires the applicant to demonstrate, to provide those simulations to the town engineer, and the town engineer to review them. So that's how we're going to address that issue. Deal with the perimeter road. In the Design Professionals' narrative, Design Professionals assert that a perimeter road as specified in section six four forty-one, four I, for parking lots over two hundred spaces is not required because the auto parking lot is two lots of a hundred and forty-four and a hundred and seventy-four spaces. There's only one auto parking lot made up of four hundred and ten built and reserved spaces. Though it's not a simple rectangular area, all sections are connected, a perimeter road is required. Snow storage. We had a brief discussion earlier about snow storage. The drawing C dash LS one shows the island between the building and the queuing area of snow storage, but that also has landscaping, so if you start snowing, storing snow on the landscaping, you're going to destroy the landscaping. Also, Deputy Chair Kevin Foley has raised the issue that no qualified snowplow operator would be storing the snow against the building, as shown on the diagram. Hence, the snow storage on-site is inadequate. So in conclusion, the site does not provide the required parking required by table six four three B, and the plan does not meet the requirements of six four nine for modification of the parking requirements for the following reasons. Assumption of a hundred employees during the larger shift is not justified, and in any cases, not a basis for setting the required parking for warehouses. The impact of locally-based trucks operated by the permanent locally-based driver employees is not considered. Improved queuing plan reduces truck and trailer parking to an unacceptable level. A perimeter road is required and not provided. This snow storage plan is unrealistic and inadequate. In summary, the building is too large to accommodate the resulting parking requirements. This is sufficient to deny the application. However, I did suggest putting that one condition in case we end up having to approve the site anyway. So then there's questions about the queuing study. Following, upon concerns were raised during the public hearing. The effect of loading and loading times on queuing analysis, the adequacy of trip generation estimates as they affect queuing, and queuing still occurring in the Talbot Lane access drive. The loading and loading times used by Mr. Hesketh's queuing analysis were two hours. Mr. Butler's expert testimony, testimony stated the unloading times as long as five hours may be required. Using statistical methods, Mr. Hesketh concluded that given the assumed input parameters, there is significant excess capacity in the queuing area. As someone who's done statistics in my own career, I found that the analysis was correct based on the assumptions that were being made. However, the trip generation rates in the in the Langen Traffic Study were not were not supported by other members of the public. So citing the, in particular, I'd like to cite the input from professional engineer Weizheng, who challenged the trip estimates calculated in the, in the traffic study. He cited the tenth edition of the IT Trip Generation Manual, as did Langen. Langen calculated a total of sixteen, sixteen hundred sixty-seven daily trips, and AM and PM peaks of two seventy-five and two fifty-three. And he calculated maximum AM PM trips of two hundred and nine, thirty-two, and twenty-two. Citing the same tenth edition, Mr. Zhang calculated thirty-eight, thirty total daily trips and AM and PM peaks of four twenty-one and three forty-two trips. Of these, Zhang calculated maximum daily AM PM trips of four eighty, forty-nine, and thirty. I note that there is an eleventh edition of the ITE generate trip generation manual, but this was not presented to us. Mr. Halazak cited an October twenty sixteen report that high queue warehouse vehicle trip generation analysis prepared by ITE tables in that report lead to significantly more trips than calculated by the Langen or Zhang, Zhang, especially if the site is assumed to be a parcel hub as opposed to one of the other uses of high queue warehouses. However, I found that his calculated peak trips of eighty-two and a hundred and forty-eight for AM PM peak hours don't seem possible from a site with fifty-four loading docks and loading times of two or more hours. So I'm going to basically drop back, and I consider the Zhang calculation to be the most appropriate. The traffic, the Hesketh Amendment also notes that there's room on the access drive for four trucks. However, if two of those trucks, two of those trucks have to proceed past the entrance of the queuing area, presumably having pre-qualified their paperwork, and they can then go straight into the, into the loading docks. However, if there's any delay, then we could end up with four trucks and have a block of the entrance to the queuing area. So that's an issue. So in conclusion, regarding the queuing, well revised queuing analysis considering the above issues has not been provided, and this commission is not in a position to perform that analysis, there are sufficient problems with the queuing analysis to call into question its validity. The conclusion that backups are, backups are highly unlikely to bleed onto Talbot Lane or Governor's Highway as required by the regulation has not been demonstrated. This is a reason to design this, to deny the site plan application. All right, my seventh issue that I, that I heard is that whether this is a truck terminal. There were a number of different inputs into that issue. The applicant provided a table showing the dock-to-floor ratio. A twenty twenty-one article by Jones, Lang, LaSalle IP Incorporated, Truck Terminal Investment and Occupier Perspectives, identified several features of modern truck terminals. And the site, as proposed, really does not meet the features of that, of that, what that article requires specifically. The ratio of truck term, truck parking to loading docks is too small. The floor area is too large, and the building depth is too large. So the same article cites uses that overlap distribution centers and warehouses such as file mile, final mile and distribution center bypass. During the hearing for the original application, I, I cited the Geography of Transport Systems fifth edition. These references provided vague guidance, what I would consider only vague guidance is how to distinguish between the two. And my understanding in situations such as this, where there's a great deal of ambiguity, a court is liable to, a court reviewing our, our finding against an application would likely give the benefit of the doubt to the applicant. So I, I think there's insufficient evidence to conclude that the proposed facility would be a truck terminal. It should have been reviewed as a special exception. However, as the applicant and others have stated, the determination should be based on the actual use. And a condition was put into the proposed approval motion to deal with that, requiring the planning department to review the uses. So the eighth issue that was brought up was idling. There's a great deal of information about, well, first of all, the applicant committed to following the idling, idling regulations, but there are several different idling regulations. The CTD regulation, which is also a state statute twenty-two A one seventy-four eighteen, and the town ordinance, section ninety-four seventy-four anti-idling, which is, well, one of those is to deal with particulate emission. So the applicant committed to adhering to those regulations, but they provide significant exceptions for situations where they can't be applied, such as extreme cold, or situations where the safety of the driver must be considered. In addition, Mr. Butler cited federal regulations that require an extensive pre-check of a vehicle that will leave it idling for at least twenty minutes. So the idea that a truck, that trucks at the site can be limited to three minutes of idling just isn't possible. One of the exceptions is that heating and cooling to ensure the health and safety of the driver, depending on how this is interpreted, a driver who is at or near his driving time limit, which all the drivers do have limits, and he may have come from a great distance away, chooses to rest in the truck and would continue to idle for several hours, depending on the temperature conditions outside. And frankly, even in my own car, I tend to turn on the air conditioning and heating in all but the most ideal weather when I can open the windows. On the other hand, it's reasonable to require the operator to enforce the more detailed statute and ordinance. So we can expect, there were conditions in the So we can expect, there were conditions in the proposed approval motion to deal with both the driver arrest situation and the requirement of the applicant to enforce the idling laws, weak as they are. There was an issue brought up of stormwater. Several residents raised issues regarding the stormwater discharge. Our town engineers reviewed this aspect of the plan, and once his comments were resolved, he found no issues. So I'm not considering that in my vote at least. Likewise, wildlife, there were several residents who raised issues regarding wildlife impacts. The Inland Wetlands and Conservation Commission reviewed the plan for these issues and found the site plan satisfactory in this regard. Okay, everything I've said so far really deals strictly with the site plan. However, and I've gotten into a dispute with both the town planner and the town engineer about what I'm about to say, but the plan erases the property lines of four sites and combines everything into a single site. The subdivision of what's called Constitution Landing, which basically surrounded Talbot Lane, included two lots, Lot 1 and 2, which were, I can't read the fine print here, fairly small compared to this site, and I think maybe a half acre, whatever. But the thing that I'm asserting is that this undoes the considerations of Planning and Zoning Commission back in May 2000, used to approve that particular subdivision, in particular, the way that these lots would be used in that subdivision. And I cited several times in the hearings, section 4B5 of the subdivision regulations. And that is a situation that brings into consideration factors such as drainage, noise, odor, surrounding land uses, and is also considers the siding of buildings. Thus, I think some of the issues that some of our residents brought up could come into play if in fact we are allowed to use the subdivision regulation to govern the approval or disapproval of this site. There are two key issues that I think are involved here. One of them is noise pollution. The town's noise ordinance, the state's noise ordinance, both cite a number of reasons why noise is a hazard. Excess noise is a serious hazard to the health, welfare, and quality of life of the citizen, the state, and the town. Exposure to certain levels of noise can result in physiological, psychological, and economic damage. Substantial body of science and technology exists by which excessive noise may be substantially abated. The primary responsibility for control of noise rests with the state and towns. Each person has a right to an environment free from excessive noise that may jeopardize his health, safety, and welfare. Unfortunately, these considerations are not allowed in our review of the site plan under the site plan regulation. So only if we can bring in the subdivision regulations can we even worry about these There was a study done by the applicant in which they performed, at our request, a very simple analysis, and we did ask for a simple analysis, of a straight line path between the southernmost loading dock over a barrier that just covers the parking of the truck in that area and on to the closest resident south of the site. That showed that that one truck, that location, is not likely to exceed the limits that are set in the noise ordinance. Now keep in mind, the noise ordinance cannot actually apply to a truck that has its engine running. It only applies to a truck that has its engine turned off. But nonetheless, I'm interpreting it to say this is what the town and the state consider to be healthy noise levels. But we can't enforce, the police can't come and enforce a truck that's making too much noise because the noise ordinance exempts that truck. Unfortunately, that study, and you know, again, we asked for it at the last minute, and they were very kind to produce that, I think in a week or two, does not include noise from trucks that do not sit behind that barrier. And the barrier is worth up to 20 decibels of the 43 decibels that you're trying to get under. And that would mean that the noise at that same residence from a truck that's not behind that little barrier would in fact exceed the healthy limits. The next issue people brought up was air pollution. There's a substantial body of evidence regarding air pollution from trucks that cited in this statement that I made, including the International Agency for Research on Cancer classified diesel particulate matter as a Group 1, an A Group 1 carcinogen, and it cites other adverse health consequences, including the decreased lung function. By the way, this is brought up by Mr. John Dengah of 144 Edgewood Drive. The California Air Resources Board cites DPM, you know, again, the particulate matter as responsible for 70% of the known potential cancer risk from air toxics in California. Also allergies, premature mortality, asthma, and heart and lung disease. Diesel trucks spew many times more harmful gases than cars. People should not live within 1,000 feet of a distribution center. The American Cancer Society, exhaust from diesel engines brings a complex mixture of soot and gases to roadway, cities, farms, and other places. Health concerns about diesel exhaust relate not only to cancer, but also to other health problems such as lung and heart disease. Brian Smith of Robinson &amp; Co., in his letters, indicated that Carlos Pasta would be adversely affected by this particulate matter. So in conclusion, the combination of properties facing Talbot Landing North is consideration of important factors considered by the PZC when approving that subdivision. The factors include noise, odor, and surrounding land uses. I did include a couple of conditions that would reduce, hopefully if people follow it, that will reduce the truck traffic on the eastern end of, or easterly of Talbot Lane on Governor's Highway. However, we've been told that, nice as these are, they're not enforceable by the police. However, I oppose the reset division of these parcels to accommodate the proposed facility. So in summary, while other commissioners may raise other issues and may not agree with me, my conclusions related to the site plan raised in this statement can be summarized as follows. Issues with offline traffic impacts though valid are not a legal basis for denying the application. Issues with large trucks being unable to turn into or out of Talbot Lane without crossing in the center lines is also not a valid legal basis for denying the application. Both in the regulation and in various industry sources, there is inadequate definition of terms like truck and freight terminal, distribution center, warehouse, to claim that this site will become a freight terminal, requiring special exception review. However, the building is too large for the site. This leads to issues with parking areas, including insufficient number of parking spaces, particularly for trucks, improper use of employee counts in the required space calculation, inadequate truck maneuvering room at various points, lack of a required perimeter road, and inadequate snow storage. This means that the parking is insufficient to support a modification of the required parking spaces as a basis for denial of the application. So again, that's why I conclude the building is too large for the site. There were sufficient deficiencies in the queuing analysis that the applicant has failed to show the queues will not back up onto public roads. And the operator of the facility needs to be tasked with enforcement of anti-idling regulations. Regarding the subdivision, combining the properties on Talbot Lane bypasses important considerations by the PZC when the subdivision was approved, and the site plan creates unacceptable noise and air pollution, health hazards. Other than rejection of the application, there are no other minimal mitigations available. So I'm sorry for taking so long, but that's my analysis.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Commissioner Dexter, your light's on. Oh, okay. That was easy. Okay, I have a few things I'd like to bring up also. The applicant had given us a list of a lot of the sections of the regulations that they feel that they have met or complied with. But I have some comments regarding that, as I don't necessarily agree with them. One of them is section 2.21, the waiver criteria. They maintain that they've requested no waivers. But if you look at Regulation 6.4.8b2, loading docks, loading docks shall not face a public highway. The above may be waived by the commission in the cases where the proposed loading dock will not, in the opinion of the commission, cause undue noise or visual disruption. But that waiver was never requested from the commission, and so I don't feel that they're meeting that language, that regulation. And in the definition to Webster, public way is a highway, which is also a road in town. Okay, and section 6.1.3, off-site improvements, they said no off-site improvements are proposed. The town planner did suggest sidewalks or possibly on-site. I know I suggested it. But I also believe that there should have been some off-site improvements to the island on the corner of Talbot and Governor's Highway, similar to the changes that were made at the entrance from Talbot, from Talbot Lane into the project. I don't think the large trucks can make that radius without climbing over the curb, and that should have been addressed. Section 6.1.5, traffic and circulation concerns, as Commissioner Wagner said, Commissioner still had concerns about the queuing and the circulation around the site. As far as the buffer, I just want to put the language of the buffer. Let's see if I got it. If I could pull out my regulations. Pull out my regulations. For buffer, it's defined as an area of land that is provided at the boundary between residential and non-residential zones, and between low-density and high-density residential zones, for the purpose of mitigating visual, comma, noise, comma, and other impacts between residential and non-residential zones, and goes on to say, and between low-density and high-density residential zones. I think that is really important, and I don't think the applicant gave it enough credence in their proposal. So now I'm going to move on to... Part of that buffer area should be the berm, because it should be a visual as well as limit some of the noise. That's what part of the buffer is, would be the berm. And they chose to locate the berm outside of the buffer area, which generally, there aren't protections. I know they put a conservation easement on it, but there's nothing in the regulations that states that the buffer requirement can be met outside the 50-foot buffer. Oh, for section 6.4.4i, off-street parking, you've got the perimeter circulation road. In the proposal, Steve covered the perimeter circulation road pretty well. I might touch on it again a little bit later. Section 6.4.5, design of the parking areas, the roadway should be a minimum of 24 feet. The southern access road is only dimensioned out at 20 feet. Plus, during the public hearing, it was discussed that on the drawing with the reserved parking, it should add a four-foot sidewalk to that plan. I don't think that was addressed in the approval condition. Okay, section 6.4.8, off-street loading, again, that's, should be screened from public And to get to the screening, you need the waiver required, and that was never requested. There's that buffer definition. As far as the berm, I think I discussed it rather substantially during the public hearing, that you have a 40-foot tall building proposed, and you have a buffer that they say is six foot high for the berm, and with trees planted on top. But the trees are never planted at the top of the buffer because the buffer's more or less like a cone. It's, so they're, they end up being planted a foot or two down from the top of the berm because they are staggered. They aren't sitting right on top of the peak. You've got plantings that are estimated at between six and eight foot tall, going on top of that berm, and the five-foot year height is supposed to, I believe, obscure activities on the site. When you look at the grades that are out there, that six-foot berm ends up only coming about one to three feet, depending on where you are on the site, up the side of that building height-wise for elevations. So then you've got 37 feet of building, 37 to 39 feet of building, that any landscaping on top of that berm, and along with the other landscaping that might be saved throughout the site, is supposed to obscure... the site is supposed to obscure any activities that happen on the site. Well, on one of the sides, you've got roughly 1,450 trips of cars coming in and out of that site. And I don't believe that the five-year growth of that berm is going to obscure the traffic for this site, which hence is the activity, which is what the regulations require. Pedestrian design standards. I've contended that there should be a sidewalk out at Governor's Highway. There should be a safe passage for any pedestrians walking down the street past this facility. Again, 1,450 cars, back-and-forth trips estimated per day. If my kids were walking out there, I would want them to be on the sidewalk, not just on the dirt or the right-of-way. But the regulations state pedestrian ways and sidewalks shall provide safe separation or delineation from motor vehicle traffic through the use of raised sidewalks and landscaping between sidewalks and parking spaces or driving aisles. That comes into play on the east side of the building where there are walkways for workers to go from their car through the parking lot, safely get into the building. But I contend just having painted lines is not safe enough for the pedestrians. They should have a little bit more protection when they're walking around in the parking lot. Number seven in this section, pedestrian ways and sidewalks may be provided wherever possible for connections to adjacent lots, developed or undevelopable or neighborhoods. Maintenance of public sidewalks, including the clearing of snow, shall be the responsibility of the property owner. Pedestrian ways internal to the site should connect to the public sidewalk at the street. Again, I contend that the sidewalk needs to be on Governor's Highway. I think Steve covered that pretty well. I'm going to get into the buffers a little bit more. Buffer 6.2.4, the purpose, the purpose of buffers is to mitigate visual noise and other impacts between residential and non-residential uses and between low-density and high-density residential uses. Standards for design, I'll go down to two. Wherever any non-residential use zone abuts any residential zone, a buffer shall be required. The buffer shall meet the following criteria. The field of view between abutting residential and non-residential use zone shall be obscured within five years' time to such an extent that activity on the abutting lot is not immediately apparent. And B, the field of view between abutting residential and non-residential use zones shall be substantially obscured visually by the maturity of the planting. So like 20 to 40 years down the road, the building will be covered, everything's fine. That's not how I feel. Buffers are not required along street frontages. However, the commission may require screening, and there is screening shown on the plan. The industrial zone, section 4.5, 4.5.1, purpose. The purpose of the industrial zone is to afford South Windsor areas reserved for industrial uses, which constitute well-planned, functional, and aesthetically pleasing environments for a prosperous industrial community and which by design are compatible with abutting zones and uses. My contention is the design is not compatible. The buffer is insufficient. Off-street loading, loading docks, receiving areas, loading docks and receiving areas shall be designed as an integral part of the building and/or adequately screened such that these areas do not adversely impact the site and building aesthetics. And again, loading docks shall not face a public highway. The above may be waived by the commission in the cases where the proposed loading dock will not, in the opinion of the commission, cause undue noise or visual disruption. As the applicant said, they did not request a waiver. So sufficient, number three, sufficient on-site vehicle maneuvering must be provided. And I'll get into that a little bit more later. 4.1.5, traffic requirements. And again, that's demonstrating that the design provides for safe and orderly vehicular and pedestrian flow and movement that minimizes vehicular and pedestrian conflicts. Steve touched on, I'm going to read this anyway just to make sure. And I believe it's 6.4.6. F, point 1, point 2, other provisions. The parking and landscaping plan shall show a satisfactory method of storm drainage and snow storage, and planting beds shall generally be protected by curbing. I don't think that they showed a satisfactory plan for snow removal. The applicant designed this building and keeps reminding the commission that it's designed similar to other warehouse/distribution centers. But none of those facilities bordered residential on three sides, two sides next to and one across the street. The applicant's lawyer has stated numerous times that the commission has to approve the application if the regulations allow it, but conveniently breezes over the language and the regulations that demand more scrutiny. Some examples of this are the loading docks shall not face a public highway, applicant will show a satisfactory method of snow storage, parking requirement calculations, parking lots, over 200 cars shall be designed with a perimeter access road. It doesn't say, oh, cut your parking in half and make two different parking lots. It says shall be designed with a perimeter access road, period. A buffer is for the purpose of mitigating noise and visual. The applicant used AutoCAD to justify their internal truck movements, but without any regard to the possibility that some trucks will not disengage from their trailers at loading docks or other spaces. Any trucks waiting in the queuing area will not disengage as they are waiting to access the facility. That's what queuing is. It's waiting to access the facility. Regarding turning movements, the applicant has consistently maintained that all previous turning movements, this application and the last application, are adequate, acceptable. But every time we've pressed them to demonstrate that, we get a new drawing showing additional room is required. I'm thankful to Derek Butler and everyone else who brought up these points for their input in bringing these issues to light. There was a letter dated March 8, 2022, from civil engineer John Hapkowitz, talking about regulation 6.6.5 and how the applicant has not met the regulation. It would have been good if the public hearing was extended to get input from the applicant, but the applicant did not offer an extension. The applicant agreed to interplantings in the buffer area but never submitted drawings that reflect this. As far as the motion that was made, I would like to see it altered to show that the applicant would have to show a sidewalk on the drawing so the workers can safely get to the building from the reserve parking places. And also, the motion addresses a fence, but it doesn't, I don't believe it really explains what the purpose of that fence is. And there was discussion that a no snow storage area sign should be located near that sensitive area so that the snow removal isn't deposited there. Commissioner, yeah, Commissioner Leib.
So we could add that to approval condition number 26 if it's agreeable to...
Yes, number 26. And I'm hoping that the commissioner who made the motion would accept those as friendly amendments.
So you made two changes? One was just discussed with Ms. Leib and...
Now, is, the reserve parking is shown on the drawing, so it wasn't part of the motion, correct?
It was.
Correct. So what I understood is you wanted two things. One would be to have a, in the event the reserve parking is built, that a sidewalk be put in the area of the reserve parking so that the folks that park there have a sidewalk to get to the building.
Correct.
And then the second thing you're talking about is modifying number 26 to add signage stating that no snow is to be allowed to be stored in that area.
Correct.
Those are the two changes.
I accept those friendly amendments.
And does the second?
I second them.
Okay, thank you. Okay. I'm going to see if any other commissioners would like to say anything. Now would be the time. If not, I want to remind the commission before I call the question, an a vote would be in favor of the motion that was made. And moving forward, a nay vote would be against accepting the motion, and then the motion would be dead if it gets defeated. Commissioner Dexter.
I just want clarification on one item.
Could you tote that down just a little?
Number 15 on the approval. I'm a little confused about the site plan being modified to reduce the number of overhead doors. Is this approval condition meant to reduce the size of the overall site plan, building? Are we still looking at 360,000 square foot building?
You had a motion, the motion, in the initial part of the motion talks about a reduction in the building size. This one, my understanding, was related specifically to the doors because of the queuing area and the number of queuing spaces and the potential of needing to address queuing issues in that area. So this really, the first part of your motion on the first page...
In red.
Addresses, yes, correct.
But we're not giving any numbers to that.
That's correct. You're talking about staying out of the wetlands in the wetland upland review area.
Thank you.
Okay. So I do plan not to support the motion as stated. I think it was important to get all those items on the record, and I do appreciate all the input that Commissioner Wagner provided.
I would also like to thank all of the members of the public, but especially the members who provided us very detailed technical input to our, to our deliber, to our review of the site plan and to our deliberations. Going back through all of the documents that we received in the last several days, I was just terribly impressed by the amount of work that people performed. I'd also like to say that regardless of whether, you know, if this goes to a court and a court, you know, accepts or denies the portion of my comments related to the subdivision, I'm actually appalled that, given the known health impacts of such a facility on residents living within 1,000 feet of the facility, that the applicant still wants to go forward with this, with this construction.
Please maintain order. Thank you. Okay. Is there any other discussions, questions, concerns? Then I will call the question. All those in favor of the motion and approving 25 Talbot Lane, say aye. All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Cavignero?
Nay.
Commissioner LeBlanc?
Nay.
Commissioner Foley?
Nay.
Commissioner Wagner?
Nay.
Commissioner Dexter?
Nay.
Commissioner Batiri?
Nay.
Chairman Passakonis?
Nay. So that's zero to seven, the motion fails. Michelle, does that end this? Or do we need a... Okay. Okay. Thank you. Okay. So...
Perhaps we should remind people there's an appeal period and we still can't discuss
Yeah, there is an appeal period for any decision the planning and zoning makes. I believe it's 15 days. So commissioners are not afforded the opportunity to comment or discuss with anybody during that period, so please respect that. Thank you very much. Okay. If anybody would like to leave, if you could please do so in an orderly, quiet fashion because we still have a long night ahead of us. Okay. Our next item is application 22-06P, People's Bank on behalf of Evergreen Walk LLC. Oh, my God. Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, be careful. This goes in... This is all this. Yeah, I got mine, Steve, if you... Caitlin, if you could put on his microphone for him also. Caitlin, if you could put on his microphone for him also. And you may take the microphone and put it on the podium if.
So you can hear me?
Yeah, that might be better. The microphone, if you don't read that paper up there, it works best three to six inches from your mouth.
Thank you.
And the end is also flexible if you want to.
The end is flexible. There we go. Okay, so are we set? Do you need to call anything?
No, just.
Nope.
Introduce yourself and have at it.
All right, so good evening. That's quite the introduction prior to our hearing here. My name is Jay Fisher. I'm the chief operating officer for Accubranch. We're here representing the People's Bank of Holyoke. With me tonight is Darren Overton. He's the principal civil engineer from SLR Consulting. He will be, will be providing the civil engineering details for the project. Over here on the left, also with me is Catherine Mies, who's project manager for Tekton. They have provided the building design for the project. I'll give a brief overview and orientation, then turn it over to Darren for the engineering details, and he'll be followed by Catherine to do an overview of the building, and then we'll be available to answer questions. The application before you is for the site plan for a bank branch and its drives only. It is not for the full development of the parcel at this time. There will be subsequent phases, and they will have to come before this commission as necessary to get their, this commission's approval for further site plans. The application, I'm sorry, the location of the parcel is the 5.5 acres that you see up on the screen between Buckland Road on the east, Cedar Ave on the north, Evergreen Way, which is becoming Cottonwood Lane on the west, and the old Highland Market now to become the Whole Foods Plaza on the south side, just across the water, intermittent water course. Darren, the next site plan. Oops. Do you have the, you know which one's the rendering? The rendering? If I can. Maybe I can't. Here it is. Do you have the colored one here? There we are. Page down. Thank you.
And if you could, please make sure you speak into the microphone.
Just trying to, trying to get the, the right picture up. Okay, so overall master plan is just a concept, and the only real point of this is to show how different building configurations could lay out relative to the bank pad, but the parcel that we're looking at, the portion of this pad that we're looking at is the bank pad in the corner. I'll let Darren speak to more details here. This is a better rendering of the, of what's under consideration. We've graded out what isn't part of this application, so what's in focus is what is part of the application. We've proposed a right-in, right-out driveway off of Cedar and a full-turn driveway off onto Cottonwood Lane, no access onto Buckland, and no curb cut through the median on Cedar. Pretty straightforward. We have been to see the Wetlands Commission and receive their approval, and in fact, the wetlands and the stormwater design is really sized to accommodate a potential full buildout, and we have a positive referral from the Architectural Review Board. So we are here tonight to ask for your approval for the site plan for the bank branch itself. And at this point, I will turn it over to Darren to walk through the details, the engineering details of the site plan, and then we'll move to Catherine for the building.
Thank you, Jay. For the record, my name is Darren Overton from SLR Consulting. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut, and Jay has already done a great overview of the project and taken care of about half my presentation, but I'll add a little detail to what Jay has presented already. So I think most of you are familiar with the site, and Jay has done an overall orientation. North is straight up on the map. What you don't see on this map over to the west is the new Costco development. We couldn't find an existing aerial that actually showed that yet, so that still looks like open land, but this property itself is open land, and the buildings, I believe, are demolished at this point. There's some existing remnants of the driveway and the trees that are still there, but most of the site is really kind of an open meadow, as you see in the aerial there. Along the southern border, you see a more wooded area. That's where there's an intermittent water course. We did go the Inland Wetlands Commission and present this to them, and they did act favorably on it in relation to our stormwater discharge that drains to that water course and the overall development as part of the site. The site generally slopes from the northeast corner there at Cedar Avenue and Buckland, where there's a high point about elevation 153, to a low point down at the cross culvert for that intermittent water course under Evergreen Way, which has an inland invert of about 125. So not a lot of grade change, but we do have some grade change, and for the most part, everything on the site drains to the south and to the west toward that intermittent water course and eventually through that cross culvert under Evergreen Way. So I'll move to the proposed rendering. Again, as Jay mentioned, this is the overall master plan. We planned this out and presented it as part of the application to understand some of the reasoning as to why we routed our stormwater discharge the way we did, why the bank is located in the location it is, and what potential opportunities there are for additional development on, on the parcel. The bank, as you can see, takes up a relatively small portion of the development area. And while that's, you know, a good plan of the master plan, that's really not what we're proposing here. So this really tells the story of what's being proposed, and there is some additional detail that's been added to the plans. We received comments from town staff, and we provided some revised plans, which we believe fully addressed those comments, and part of that is providing a little bit more phasing information and providing this plan with a, with an outline of the limit of construction that's planned for the project, which is basically what's highlighted here for the bank. So what we're proposing is a 2,000-square-foot bank. Our parking is calculated based on the regulations of one per 250 square feet, which comes out to eight parking spaces. The bank operators have also said that they're planning for four employees. The regulations say we have to accommodate the employees as well, so the required parking is 12 spaces. We've proposed on the site plan a total of 15, so there's a few extra. Goes a little bit above and beyond the requirements, and we do have one handicap accessible space, which meets the ADA regulations, and we have ADA accessible routes into the, into the building. We have a proposed access road, which Jay had mentioned, I'll point it with the cursor here, off of Cedar Avenue. This is restricted to a right-in, right-out, and then we have a loop road that comes through the site out to Evergreen, and this loop is planned to be constructed as part of the project and serve the bank, which is here in the northeast corner. The overall site is landscaped, as you can see, with a mix of native trees, shrubs. There's lawn areas that are proposed, and then the remainder of the site that is undeveloped will generally remain as the meadow that's there or the wooded area along the water course along the south side. There are three maples proposed along Buckland Avenue. There's six elm trees that are also proposed along the interior to provide some shade trees, some arborvitae also along Cedar to provide some screening. There's two flowering dogwoods adjacent to the bank, and then we have foundation plantings and other planting beds adjacent to the bank building itself, the entrance drive and around some of the signage that's proposed as part of the project. The site is proposed to be served by public water and sewer. The water and other utilities come off of Cedar Ave. Power is going to come off of an existing pole at the intersection of Cedar and Buckland, and then the sewer is located in Evergreen Way, so we have an extension of the sanitary sewer up that access drive from Evergreen Way up to serve the bank, and will also have the ability to provide access to future development to serve for sewer uses. Our stormwater management, when we started the project, we took a look at understanding that there was, you know, a larger development that was planned as part of the overall development around us and that this was one parcel of that development. There was a master plan, drainage plan that was done. We reviewed that to understand what had been planned in the past as part of this parcel relative to the overall project. So we looked at the 2007 development plan, and this was unit five in that plan and was included as part of the overall stormwater management. This parcel was identified as an area that was not required for stormwater detention, so we have not done peak flow analysis or proposed detention on the site, because as we understand it from that report, detention was planned as part of a larger basin further west of the site. So detention has already been taken care of and part of the planned development of this property. So the stormwater management that we propose is for water quality management, which again follows that plan. We calculated water quality flow in the deep water, from the deep water quality manual. We have an offline hydrodynamic separator that serves to filter out pollutants and floatables. It's part of the storm drainage collection system, and then we discharge at a 50-foot-long level spreader down along the water course. So recognize that that water course is really the only place that we have to discharge in the site, and again, the culvert under Evergreen Way and the detention planned for the drainage from the site to drain to that water course, and the culverts were sized accordingly for development of this property. There, there's, Cedar Ave is above us. There's no storm drainage that's down gradient in any of the roadways that we could actually access, so discharge to the water course is, is what has been planned for and what we designed. We also did provide an erosion and sediment control plan. There's only about 1.24 acres of disturbance total, so there's not a lot that's required as far as the stormwater or as far as the erosion and sediment control plan. We've designated topsoil stockpile areas. Most of the erosion is controlled by perimeter silt fence controls. We also have inland protection on the catch basins, and we've proposed the two entrance drives to be used as construction entrances. So as part of the revisions that we've submitted in relation to the town staff comments, we did add a sidewalk coming in off of Cedar Ave. It's on the west side of the access drive. We added a crosswalk here and then a crosswalk across the bank driveway to connect in with the sidewalk that was planned in front of the bank to provide access in from Cedar Avenue. So we've, we've accommodated that. I did submit a copy of a line-by-line comment response letter to both the planning staff and engineering staff. You have that. I'd be happy to go through the details of that if you'd like to, but at this point, I'd like to have Catherine Mies, the project architect, come up and present the architecture for the project. Just. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have after Catherine's presentation. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Mies. I'm an associate with Tekton Architects and project manager for, for our company. I'm just going to give you a quick tour around the building so you can get a feel for the architecture. So as you can see in the rendering on the screen, it's a clapboard profile-sided building with a batten board detail in contrast color, just to bring a little bit of attention to that detail, mostly on the upper portion of the building. This really takes from obviously some components of New England style of architecture, obviously already very prominent in South Windsor. At the gable roof, the higher gable roof, and also at the drive-through canopy roof, we are employing a standing seam roof in a dark charcoal color, and we are also using an asphalt shingle on the other two parts of the building. We've taken efforts to minimize the height of the drive-through canopy, and we've also positioned it on the side of the building that is the opposite side of the building from the Buckland facade, so we're really trying to minimize the visibility of that drive-through as much as possible so that the architecture, the more attractive faces of the architecture are what's facing the major drives. About 12 inches of real stone are the base around the entire structure, and there are some blue elements that we're using as accent on the muntin windows. The wall mounted scanses are another complement to the New England design aesthetic with kind of a nautical look. So this is the northwest perspective. And then this is the southeast perspective, so Buckland is here and Cedar would be behind. And then just to, so that you can actually see the building in elevation, the south elevation here, this is your main entrance, so as you're coming in, the drive-through is on your left. As you go around to the west side of the building, that's where you see the drive-through canopy there, and then to the north elevation, it's kind of a mirror of the front of the building. And then the east elevation, which is what's facing Buckland, is, you know, essentially your cleanest elevation there. And then just to give you a feel for the exterior finishes, these are pictures from other buildings that have been constructed. This is a, our client's prototype design that we put together for them for a couple of other locations or for, it was first built in Ludlow, Massachusetts, and then South Hadley, Massachusetts, and this is the first ground-up version of this building that will be hopefully completed in Connecticut. So you can see some real actual pictures of the building that has been constructed. So the standing seam and shingle roofs that I spoke to earlier, the nautical light fixture, you can also see our gutter detail. We do tie in the color to the color of the asphalt shingles just for a nice clean look and lower contrast where the gutters don't stand out. The window and PVC accent details here, so you can see the trim detail and the gray, the gray color, again, the canopy drive-through, and the exterior doors, clapboard, and the stone base. Also happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Darren and Catherine. We are available for questions. That's our presentation, so.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we will turn to our director of planning, Michelle Light.
Thank you. I'll provide you a brief report. I did send it out to you ahead of time, so hopefully you had a chance to take a look at it. This is a request for site plan approval for a 2,000-square-foot bank. It's located unit 5A, which is a southwesterly corner of Buckland Road and Cedar Ave. The main property is 151 Buckland Road, Gate Lake Development Zone. As indicated, this site is 5.7 acres. We are just entertaining the bank building, which would be phase one of the project, and the applicant would be returning with any future development on this site to both Inland Wetlands Agency and the Planning and Zoning Commission. As indicated, the primary access for the bank will be a right-in, right-out off of Cedar, and also there'll be a full access on what is to be known as the Cottonwood Lane that was renamed, if you recall, with the last application. The applicant has provided parking for 15 parking spaces. They are showing two EV charging spaces, although the threshold is 15 and under, you don't have to. They have gone ahead and provided two. We do appreciate that. They are showing sidewalks proposed along Cedar Ave. The length of Cedar Ave, there was some discussion of whether or not it would be the length of Cedar Ave. I see the revised plans show it the length with a sidewalk coming into the site to service the bank. That would all be part of phase one. There is a sidewalk currently that exists along Cottonwood Lane, just for your information, so that would complete kind of the sidewalk network on that, that parcel of land. Lighting poles are shown as 25 feet. The full cutoff fixtures are using the same design that's used throughout Evergreen Walk. The full cutoff fixtures are using the same design that's used throughout Evergreen Walk. There is some accent lighting that's shown on the building. The applicant did present this building to the designer review committee on February 17th. The members were very pleased with the architecture design. We do have two architects on there, and both of them had very nice complimentary things to say about the building, so we'll take their word for the niceness of it. This proposed signage on the building, you can see the graphic up there, the applicant would be allowed a monument sign. I don't believe you have one proposed at this time. You're still working on that.
Still working on it.
So that'll come back into the approval process. You see the landscaping plan, it's a well-designed landscape site. We did ask about a dumpster. I'm assuming you don't need one with the bank facility at this point?
Bank facilities at this point, this stage, most of them don't use dumpsters anymore because there's so much less paper that it just gets shredded and taken out with the cleaning, by the cleaning service each day.
And I just would report the Wetlands Commission did approve this application on February 16th. They have the recommendation of a $10,000 bond for erosion segmentation measures, $15,000 for stormwater structures. If this application is approved, there are no other planning modifications requested. They've been addressed with the revised plans. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll turn to our town engineer, Jeff Doolittle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just briefly go over my comments. The memo that they provided appears to have answered all of these comments, but we asked that a complete phasing plan be shown so it's clear what is being built as part of this project and what's being built in the future. They provided that. We talked about the driveway and the sidewalk. There's two old driveways on Buckland Road for the old houses. I asked that they be clearly marked to be removed, including the pavement. One has a stone wall and a fence because it drops off. That can all be incorporated into the grading. They have said they've added notes to that effect. I asked for some more details with regard to the grading and the drainage and the sidewalks on site, and they said they have provided that. And I believe Michelle said it, but WPCA review and approval is needed for this application.
Okay, thank you very much. So at this time, I'll open it up to commissioners. Anybody's got questions, comments? Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. I appreciate that you've planned to install two EVs. I'm a former chair of the Energy Committee and probably had a lot to do with the regulation that we have, and I appreciate that you're doing it even though it's not required because you only have 15 parking spaces. A couple of comments regarding that. First of all, because we want EV SE service to be available to handicapped users, we require the first, no matter where you are, the first EV charger to be in a parking space that is at least van-accessible, even if it's not marked as handicapped only. So the idea is that you have a limited number of chargers. We don't want to, you've got two, we don't want to dedicate half of them to only people who qualify for handicap use, so, but we want them to be able to use it. So one of the spaces needs to be designed to be van-accessible, so the geometry, everything looks like a handicap space, a van-accessible handicap space, but it isn't labeled for handicap only. It doesn't have the wheelchair sign. That way, anybody can use the two chargers, but only one of them would also support a handicapped driver with a van should they choose to charge their vehicle there. The other thing that I didn't see, and I'm paged through very quickly, I didn't see the way you protect the EV charger from vehicle impact. There's different ways you can do it. You can do it with a, what do you call that, bar that sits in the road? Well, there's a bollard, it'd be one choice.
Bollard is vertical. You're talking about horizontal.
Yeah, you could have a vertical bollard, or you could have a...
Stop bar.
Stop bar, yeah.
Some of that will have to be put to rest as, or put together as we decide which EV charging company is going to do it, whether they will install the EV station or we'll install the EV station. There's a wide range of different ways of doing it, so, you know, nobody's going to want it to be hit anyway because they're too expensive, so it'll be protected.
One thing that, you know, I'm kind of glad you're doing too, because the typical chargers now serve as two spaces with one pole.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Cabbagnaro?
Thank you. This is just a quick comment or a thought of mine. Looking through the two crosswalks here, I'm looking at the more western one on the proposal here, and I was sort of thinking in mind the different types of crosswalks. For example, I see that it's a painted white crosswalk. Have you guys ever thought of making it a raised crosswalk by any chance? Looking through it, I'm, part of me may think that there may be some drivers either in a rush to go to the bank or for whatever reason speeding, and a raised crosswalk will definitely, I wouldn't say slow down their car, but make them realize that they need to slow down because I'm looking at the future development of this parcel and seeing a lot of it being parking lots and people trying to walk across. I'm just trying to think that in mind. If a raised crosswalk could be viable for this? If not, no worries, it's just a comment.
We can take a look at that, you know, what's involved in doing it and making it snowplow accessible, if you will, which is a comparable sort of concern. So, yeah, we'll take a look at it as it comes to construction. Nobody wants anybody to be hurt.
Could you discuss how you're going to, you're only putting in a certain amount of road pavement, how you're going to end that in a safe manner so people aren't driving off the end or, I'm not sure?
You mean driving off the sides of the road, of the driveway?
Straight ahead. When you're coming from Cottonwood, you come straight ahead, and right now you're planning to turn left into the bank. How are you going to keep somebody from going straight?
We can, it'll be a temporary...
There's snow on the ground and...
Yeah, it'll be temporary. We'll put something up there so nobody runs off the road. Otherwise, we'll have new vehicles ourselves. No, I'm being a little facetious here. You're talking about right here.
Correct.
Yeah, we'll either put a temporary curb up there, depending on the timeline. The reality is, there's an awful lot of interest in the rest of the property, so by the time we get there, we may not need anything. But on a temporary basis, certainly, you know, it makes sense to put something up to make sure that nobody ends up in a dirt pile or something like that while it's being done.
Okay. I like the architecture. It looks good. Commissioners, any, anything else? Okay. So we did get approval conditions. If somebody would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve application 22-06P. This is People's Bank Site Plan. We have standard approval conditions 1 through 12, but number three is an application is subject to the conditions of approval in the Inland Wetlands Agency Conservation Commission, including bonds in the amount of $10,000 to ensure compliance with erosion and sediment control measures, and $15,000 for the installation of the stormwater structures. Number four mentions a landscaping bond in the amount of $5,000, which is required to be posted prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. And then condition 13 states engineering comments dated 3/14/22 shall be incorporated into the final plans. And finally, 14, a phasing plan shall also be submitted.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion, questions, comments? Anyone? Commissioner Wagner?
I'd like to add a fourth condition, that the EV charger, one of the two EV charger spaces be van-accessible as required by zoning regulations, and that the charger be protected by one of several methods mentioned in the zoning regulations.
Okay. Do you accept that, Commissioner Dexter?
I do, I do accept that.
I do accept that.
Okay, and our second...
I accept that.
Okay. Anything else, commissioners? Any questions, comments, concerns? If not, Commissioner Foley?
No, no.
Oh, okay, I see your light on. Okay. Hearing none? All those in favor of the motion of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. Let me just put this away here.
Do you want to help him? Give your PowerPoint. Paper. But they have a copy of it.
Please, if you could leave quietly, that would be appreciated. Okay, our next item on our agenda is our housing, draft housing plan. You can't even spin around in here. Number, right after People's Bank.
Hopefully we won't have to, I'll talk loud. You're going to walk out the door on me, right? No. Wonderful. Good evening, my name is Glenn Chalder. I'm with Planted Metrics. I've had the pleasure of working with a working group put together by the town to prepare an affordable housing plan, and I'm, thank you, I'm here tonight to give you an overview of the plan. As you're probably used to, a PowerPoint is a good way to provide an overview, so I'll go ahead and do that. In 2017, the state legislature passed a public act requiring every municipality in Connecticut to prepare an affordable housing plan by June 1 of this year. The requirement in the statute is for the plan to specify how the municipality intends to increase the number of affordable housing developments in the municipality, and also another requirement is for the plan to be updated every five years. So this is an issue of growing public policy interest in the state of Connecticut. All towns are required to prepare this and update it every five years, so that gives you a sense of the importance that the state has placed on this. The Affordable Housing Working Group has been evaluating ways to address housing. We looked at the POCD, the Plan of Conservation and Development, in terms of those issues, the zoning regulations, et cetera. We undertook a community survey to understand residents' thoughts and feelings about affordable housing. We evaluated some different strategy options and prepared, reviewed, and refined a plan. And we're here tonight to provide an overview. The statutes require that the adopting entity be an official agency of the town, so the commission, because of the POCD and your interest in work with housing, the plan has arrived on your doorstep. The plan has five major components to it. I'll just roll through those somewhat quickly here tonight. Planning for housing choices is the first section, some relevant background information for you and for others who are perhaps becoming more familiar with this issue, the overall vision espoused in the plan, an overview of housing strategies, and a section at the end which talks about implementation. First thing I wanted to do in terms of planning for housing choices is share some information with you about the affordability scenario that we find ourselves in as a community, as a region, a state, and even the country. This is a graph which shows the ratio between median house price and median income from 1968 through to today. So many years ago, the sort of rule of thumb was housing would be roughly three times your income, or four times your income in earlier decades, and that's what's reflected by the red horizontal line here. So what we see in the late 1960s, housing cost relative to income fell below that line, so housing was readily affordable. If you were able to get into the housing market at that time, good for you. However, over time, and I chuckle a little bit for those of us who are baby boomers, when we started to get into the housing market, the demand increased faster than the supply did. Housing is an inelastic commodity, and so what we see here in the late 70s is the price bump and continued on at the level of affordability or unaffordability. And then really, in the late 90s, housing prices really started to grow significantly. Part of that was the subprime mortgage crisis, which hit and collapsed in 2006. Housing prices dropped back, but now you see that since about 2012 through to 2018, that housing prices have continued to increase. This data does not reflect the COVID bubble, which has increased housing prices another 25%. So this really is a graph of housing unaffordability. So for people who have housing, they sort of understand that they have housing. They don't really understand the issues that many other people face, and I think this graph can illustrate for people the challenge that many people are facing today, and that's part of the reason for the preparation of this housing affordability plan. In addition, as part of our analysis, what we found is there's approximately 2,300 households in South Windsor. These are residents today living in the community who are housing cost burdened. That's about 21% of the population. One in five households are spending more than 30% of their income on housing. And when households do that, if they're earning above-average incomes, they may choose to spend much more on housing, and they can afford to do so. But if they are below median incomes, it's actually now impinging on their ability to afford transportation, food, education, recreation, some of the other things that people sort of take for granted. So since housing is one of the most basic human needs, housing cost burden has a significant influence on everybody's quality of life. Now, there's good news for South Windsor, which is there are about 3,900 housing units which are called NOAA. NOAA stands for Naturally Occurring Affordable Housing. These are units, because of their size, age, condition, location, are selling at prices which make them affordable to people of lower or moderate income. So that's great news because we have a good diversity of housing stock in South Windsor. But according to the state criteria, how the state defines affordable housing, and you've perhaps heard of 830G and the 10% threshold, we're at 739 units and our percentage is at 6.8%, so we haven't met the state threshold, and South Windsor is subject to the Affordable Housing Appeals Procedure. Fortunately, we also have a moratorium right now. That's the good news. Bad news is, it expires in two years, and as you're aware, two years goes by fairly quickly. Community survey results, there are people who understood the housing issue and wished for us to put together strategies. There are other people who didn't recognize the challenge that South Windsor and people perhaps are facing, but some of the results and findings that came out, that people felt that the design of housing was particularly important to be able to assimilate it into South Windsor. They felt that accessory dwelling units could help address this particular situation in addition to other types of housing and locations near the town center they felt were appropriate within the community. The overall goal statement that was put together with and for the working group, seek to provide for a variety of housing options and choices in South Windsor for people and households of ages, incomes, lifestyles, and life stages. So it's really about more than just affordable housing, right? It's affordable housing, but other housing options and choices as well. So we've grouped the strategies together, and I'd just like to go through them somewhat quickly for you. First strategy was about enhancing the capacity for addressing affordable housing. There are certain types of affordable housing that require very little municipal effort in Town Hall. For example, the housing authority manages their own projects and don't require much in the way of assistance from Town Hall. We also have other types of assisted developments, which are managed by the developers. We also get credit for CHFA mortgage union... We also get credit for CHFA mortgage units and tenant rental assistance units, and those are administered by others. But the flavor of housing, called deed-restricted housing, does in fact require some involvement on the municipality. And having the capacity to address these issues is something I think is important for South Windsor to start to think about. So the first recommendation is having an ongoing working group that can continue to evaluate housing-related issues and work with the commission and other organizations and situations. The moratorium's off in two years. In about three or four years, it's probably gonna start to be time to prepare the next plan, because it can't ever be longer than, or older than, five years old. The plan also recommends establishment of a special housing fund. This is a fund that can accept grants or gifts, bequests, donations, et cetera, or collect fees if the community wishes to do so. And that money can now be available to support housing efforts and provide seed money to help create additional affordable units. The plan also recommends establishing standard documents. One of the requirements in the statute for an 830G development, or really any deed-restricted development, is that it have what's called a housing affordability plan, which indicates how the occupants will be qualified for the unit, how the sale price is gonna be calculated, these types of things. And if there are different affordability plans with different provisions in, it quickly becomes a nightmare in trying to manage that and consumes quite a bit of staff time. On the other hand, municipalities which have adopted a standard document that says you will use our definition of income, or this is how we're gonna compute sale prices or rental rates in accordance with state law, makes it very easy for everybody. Very little time has to be spent, because that's available. The next strategy relates to the concept of assisted housing. Assisted housing is housing which is funded by state or federal monies, which subsidize the construction cost so that it can be rented at affordable prices. So this includes the housing authority and the units that they have, and it can also include private developers who choose to take advantage of those funding sources to create additional units. So the plan recommends working with the housing authority and with private developers to try to promote additional assisted housing. The advantage for the town in this situation is 100% of the units can be affordable. They can be at deeper levels of affordability. An 830G, for example, is at 80% of area median income. The housing authority may do 40 or 50% of area median income, and South Windsor gets more housing unit equivalent points for that, and that could get us closer to our next moratorium. Recommendation in the plan for increasing deed-restricted housing. Now, you're familiar with 830G and the 10% set aside requirement. If housing units get built with no affordable units set aside, they are relying on other developments to help get us to 10%. If they provide 10%, now we're staying steady, getting, maintaining our relationship, if you will, to 830G. And if we want it to be remedial, even a requirement above that can be used to create affordable units. So some communities are looking at the possibility of requiring 10% of everybody, either through units built on site, or a fee in lieu of affordable housing, or some other way to address that, and then incentivizing a higher percentage. Maybe it's a little extra height in the building, or density, or some other type of accommodation, but the trade-off or the benefit for the community could be the provision of affordable units. The plan also recommends investigating smaller-scale affordable housing developments. People tend to think that these need to be big projects, 50 or 100 units, and the issue's they don't. They can be smaller and fit into neighborhoods and other types of situations, and the plan recommends that that be investigated. As we learned in the survey, people care about location of these developments, and they also care about the design of these developments. The P O C D contains a map which identifies Buckland Road, the town center area, and Sullivan Avenue as being potential locations for higher-density or mixed-use development, and that could be some little locational guidance in the plan. And on the right-hand side on this slide here is an example from Simsbury's Workforce Housing Overlay Zone, where they've identified building forms and types that they think are appropriate. And so the Design Review Committee in South Windsor could help put together some visual guidelines, so that we can make sure that developments are hopefully compatible with the overall design in the community. One of the hardest things in terms of creation of affordable housing is to find the land where we can make this work. We do have some opportunities. The two photographs which are up here are sites which are owned and operated by the housing authority. And so Wapping Mews, for example, has area on site that could support additional buildings. Back when these developments were built in the 60s, the general model was one-story buildings, spread apart. And what happens is, in the wintertime, if you wanna go visit your friend, you've gotta go outside on a sidewalk that may or may not be cleared of snow. So nowadays, the model tends to be a two-story building, sometimes a three with an elevator in internal space that you can wear your bunny slippers and go visit people. So there's possibility that we actually may have land where we could increase the number of units and look at opportunities for other parcels in the future to help meet housing needs. The plan recommends also increasing other housing options and choices. There is a term used these days called middle housing. You may have heard that phrase. Middle housing refers to housing which falls between single-family housing at one end of the spectrum, and then large multifamily developments at the other end of the spectrum. And in-between is a whole host of housing types in terms of housing with accessory units, two-family, three-family, small cottage court developments, these types of things that can fit in a lot of places within a community. And so these could be things to be considered, possibly in South Windsor in the future. I would be remiss if I didn't spend a little bit of time talking about our overall schedule here. The statutory requirement is the plan be adopted by June 1 of this year, and we've already talked several times tonight about how fast time flies. So our overall approach here and our consideration tonight is to share this information with you. With your feedback, we can make modifications to the plan, but our goal would be to schedule a public hearing on this plan for the end of April. We do have a session scheduled with the town council next week to get their thoughts and feedback, and we're gonna bring those comments with us to the public hearing as well. And then that will have us in a situation to adopt the plan before the June deadline. So that's an overview from, about the plan. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, or take notes on any comments.
Okay. Thank you, Glenn. Commissioners, any questions, comments? Kritif?
I have a, I'm trying to understand something. So is there a requirement for affordable housing to have access to public transportation?
There is not a requirement in the statute to do that, but that's one of the things that in terms of the locational guidelines that we had talked about, there is bus service that comes to the town center area and on Buckland Road, so that is certainly a consideration as to why that location would be quite beneficial. Oftentimes, affordable housing may involve some extra density, so public water and public sewer would be other things that would be locational guidelines. So those types of criteria are very important.
Okay. Michelle, with this, at this time, we need to send this to CROG, right?
Yeah, you should really entertain a motion to schedule the public hearing on April 26, and then we could initiate the CROG review at that point, get it out on our website so that it would be out for 35-day viewing is what the goal is.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions? Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. First of all, the schedule that you just showed us, the hearing is with us. So the town council's not gonna have a hearing, they're just gonna discuss it, or how are they gonna process this thing? How do we work in parallel with the town council?
Yep, great question, thank you. So the adopting entity will be the Planning and Zoning Commission. Because of the timeframe that we were trying to work within, we recognized the dates that we had to hit and the council and their meeting schedules. So the decision that was made was to, is to go ahead and schedule the public hearing, have our meeting separately with the council, and bring those comments, oops, apologize, bring those comments in at the public hearing in case there's any issues or consideration. The statutory requirement is for a 35-day notice period of the proposed plan, but there could be edits or changes that would occur at the public hearing or from the town council, et cetera, and those will be part of the record for the public hearing in April.
Would it be effective to have, I mean, they have to vote on this as well?
No, they do not.
Oh, okay. Because I was gonna suggest a joint meeting, but if they don't...
Go ahead, change the process on us at the last minute.
Actually, that was it?
So I have some other questions. It seems to want to follow the P O C D, but actually, we're revising the P O C D pretty soon. Shouldn't this be leading the P O C D? In other words, providing input to the P O C D?
I would think that it, one of the things, again, this is a five-year update as opposed to the P O C D. You're fortunate, because the census data is about to come out, we anticipate later this spring, so that this plan, or an update of this plan, could be incorporated into the P O C D, and now the two of them would proceed sort of in parallel rather than a separate independent. So that's certainly an option that's available to the commission to consider.
See, Mr. Garashi already asked about transportation, which I think is important. It's more than the price of the house that makes a place affordable, and also the ability to live there in other parts, like being able to walk to a grocery store, being able to get on a bus to go somewhere instead of owning a car. Has this committee either been approached or worked with an organization called Desegregate Connecticut?
We have paid attention to their activities.
But they've not provided input?
Not directly to our efforts, no.
Okay. Okay. And then, to me, the, you know, the median income in South Windsor's actually pretty high, which drives up the price of all this affordable housing, or at least what qualifies. How are we addressing people with very low income? We do have a mobile home park in town, and we do have some housing that's not in such great shape in some places, but, you know, there are people, I assume, who fall well below the median income, and I guess I'd ask how we're accommodating them within this structure.
I think the people at 50% of area median income and lower are the most challenging affordable housing options, and I think it's our, my anticipation and what the committee has discussed, is the idea that the housing authority units, the assisted housing, are gonna be the best way to address that need. South Windsor's fortunate, because you've got a housing authority that's got a number of projects, but you've also got private developers who built assisted housing in town, and funding's available. They've done a wonderful job doing those developments, and our hope is that those efforts will continue. For example, Wapping Mews or Flax Hill could be places that additional units, we have the land already, perhaps we could create additional units there. So that's, again, perhaps the biggest challenge. We're going to see scenarios in the future that people will probably continue to propose 830G applications, and we hope to be better prepared with model affordability plans and other things to try to guide those efforts. And the suggestion in the plan is to possibly look at ways that we could diversify the housing stock, or even require the provision of affordable units, but those affordable units are at 60 or 80% of area median income. So those are at the, at the top end of the lower or moderate income situations. So we've tried to cover the spectrum in this, recognizing the biggest challenge and the biggest need is going to be housing authority units. We're cognizant, discussed the concept of the mobile home parks which are in town, and to continue to monitor those situations. Should those situations become resident-owned sites, then the town can count those to the 830G list. They go on our list. But the most common situation is a private entity owns the land, leases the land to somebody who has a mobile home on it, and those units, although they are naturally affordable, don't show up on the 830G list. So we're aware of those, and I guess that'll be a challenge for the advisory committee or the special housing committee in the future.
I mean, it seems to me it's, I know it's important to have the right counts for all kinds of reasons, but it's really more important to make sure that the people who fall in these income category, categories actually have a place to live. So whether or not the mobile home park is counted or not, I would wanna make sure that the, and I haven't been over there, I have no idea what the living conditions are like, but I'd wanna make sure that it's a quality place to live, you know, regardless of people's income.
We recognize it's a team effort. We've got a health department, we've got public safety organizations that all have aspects of this that they're involved in, so we hope it will continue to be a team effort.
You showed some land, some sites, or a diagram that included some of the Buckland Gateway Zone. This commission recently rejected housing which included affordable housing in the Buckland Gateway Zone, so I think we have to have a heart-to-heart discussion about whether we want to go back into that area and provide affordable housing.
This illustration here was taken from the P O C D, so it wasn't meant to guide or dictate this effort. I think the, what we learned from the survey and from our discussions is that location is important, design's important. So if we could adopt regulations to identify where we might want to, or be more accommodating of higher-density housing, that could be a step forward for South Windsor.
All right, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Bernstein's microphone?
Yes, it is.
And as of this moment, Commissioner Bernstein is sitting for Commissioner Foley.
Well, thank you. So this is a question from my fellow commissioners. So we voted tonight on a housing moratorium, and I'm wondering if that impacts this in any way, shape, or form, especially looking at his conceptual schedule. I don't know if it's relevant or not.
Well, what that moratorium will do is give the commission the opportunity to put some of these regulations and this affordable housing plan into the regulations. So before other projects can come forward that don't have any affordability component, like the, I think it was Chestnut Ridge up in South Windsor that was approved, I don't know, a year ago or so, which had no affordability component, future developments will have an affordability.
Okay, that makes sense. So we can conceptualize and strategize, but no one can act on it until the moratorium is over.
Correct. Okay. Mr. Cavignaro, did you have your light on before? Okay. Okay. So any other questions, comments? Then at this time, I would look for a motion from the commissioners to set the public hearing date for April 26, and to send this to CROG, correct? Or did we already?
It actually doesn't go to CROG, but it does get posted on our website for a 30-day period, 35-day period of time, and we will put a prominent spot on the Planning and Zoning page, Planning Department page.
Okay. So commissioners?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion to set the public hearing, and we have a second by Commissioner Vettiri. Any questions, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Aye. Those opposed, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the presentation, Glenn. Okay, commissioners, we still have some items on our agenda, but if we're to address them, we need an extension. We need a motion to extend, or our meeting is over?
I move that we extend 30 minutes.
Okay. Motion to extend for 30 minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any debate? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, our next item of business is One Buckland Center, application 15-48P. Good evening.
Good evening.
The mic's right here. Can we get the mic in the right position? Good evening, Chairman Passakonis. Mr. Bernstein is substituting for Mr. Foley, and members of the commission. For the record, Peter Demali, President of Design Professionals, 21 Jeffrey Drive here in South Windsor, been operating here for the last 36 years. And we're here representing Scott Leonard, who's right behind me, behind Phil Tarsinis. And he's the owner of One Buckland Center, and you may recall, many of you were on the commission when about six years ago, you approved One Buckland Center, a two-building development, the last complex on the right, just before you hit the Manchester Line on Buckland Road going south, just before the Plaza at Buckingham Hills there. And it was opened roughly in two, four years ago. We have, on the left side of that screen, you'll see the Southerly Building, which is the smaller of the two buildings. That has one vacancy we're going to talk about, which is roughly 1,530 square feet. The building to the right has only one occupant, and that is the urgent care center, Hartford Hospital's urgent care center, only at the extreme easterly end of the site, which is right where the arrow is. And the balance of the building, which is roughly 2/3 of the building, is empty, and has been empty since the building, the complex was built by Mr. Leonard. So, we did a quick presentation when your last meeting was virtual, from my office, I did a quick presentation, and then it struck the hour and we're done. So, we couldn't finish other than a quick presentation. So, let me just highlight what some of the things we said, instead of going through the whole thing? Do you like that?
Please do. We extended for 30 minutes, and we have three more items on our agenda.
We'll try to wrap it up very quickly.
Okay, thank you.
So, basically, the issue is whether or not you apply your retail standard regulations for parking, which is five per thousand, or one for every 200 square feet, or you apply the restaurant standards to a proposed subway restaurant in this facility. They have an interested party that'd like to move in, that'd fill up the building, like to fill it up. But, so, do we do either eight parking spaces under retail, which is like what you do, for example, for 7-Eleven, a retail-type place where they still serve food and things, or do you have us go up to 31 parking spaces for the little 1,530-square-foot store, which is an increase of 23 spaces? So, a study was done on existing, immediately existing subway restaurants, and we wanted to see, can we live with the eight parking spaces? So, we studied, there was a study done of six of them, and of those, only one exceeded the eight parking spaces during a five-day study, weekday study. And so, only one of them did that, and that was the subway that's over on Sullivan Avenue. If you know the subway on Sullivan Avenue, I used my office right down the street there for years, the only real quick-service restaurant in that area is Dairy Queen. Both the Dairy Queen and the subway are one of the highest grossing in that franchise for the state, Dairy Queen is one of the top in the state, and so isn't the subway, because there's a lack of competition right there. There are some other full-service restaurants around, but if somebody wants to get a quick meal in their lunch break, that's where they go. They go to the subway or Dairy Queen, and they're high-grossing restaurants. So, we took a look at it, so there's a study done of the parking, and only the subway on Sullivan Avenue, the six right around here, immediately contiguous to where we're looking at, closest proximity. So, we looked at those, and only the one on Sullivan Avenue was the one that exceeded eight parking spaces, and it was only for a very brief period of time, like for a few minutes, but it did during the course of day, and on every day, I think we witnessed that. So, we looked at, and so, Design Professional staff took a look, said, well, let's try to validate this, why is this occurring? So, we looked at within a half-mile radius of all six of these locations, see, why is it that Sullivan Avenue is doing so much better, grossing, revenue and all that stuff, and requiring more parking than a typical subway restaurant? And we found out it was because there was an absence of competition. And so, we looked at all the others, and we summarized those in our report, and if you look at, if you look at the proposed location of the, at One Buckland Center for a subway, that there's a lot of competition. If you look at it, I think we had, what, we have 12, let's see, we had 12 fast-food or quick-service restaurants right in the immediate area, within a half-mile, unlike any of the others that we had. And then, there are also 11 full-service restaurants, like Olive Garden, Chili's, what have you, Hooters and stuff. So, there's tremendous amount of competition there. We fully expect that this particular location will be more in keeping in line with the typical subway in this area, as opposed to the fantastic demand for the one up on Sullivan Avenue. Mr. Leonard owns that complex up on Sullivan Avenue. He maintains it's beautiful, wand's always mowed and all that stuff, well-maintained. So, that summarizes that, why it is that we're confident that going with the retail, applying the retail standard, which is for eight parking spaces versus a restaurant standard, which is 31 spaces, why that should, why you should consider a reduction to 23. We, also, we appended a letter from the prospective franchisee, who owns other subways, who owns the one up on Sullivan Avenue, and mentioned to us how well that does, and why it does so well. And also, we described what's happening with the subway restaurants. People are coming in, a lot of them are coming in for 30 seconds, they're picking it up and they're gone. There are a lot of reasons for that, we detail it in here, why there's quick turnaround, and why there's not a demand for the parking. It's completely changed around. And only 10% of our customers actually dine in anymore. They're just not dining in. They're picking it up quickly and on their way, and they also use food services, too. There are a variety of them that go and pick them up for you and deliver it. And there's curbside service, so there are a lot of reasons why the demand for parking is way down. And key thing about a subway is it's not your typical restaurant. Unlike most restaurants, would you like to have that sunny side up or whatever, they are medium, they don't cook. They assemble the subway sandwiches, but they don't cook there. They can heat something up, they have a warming oven, but they do not cook there. So, therefore, it's completely different from a typical kitchen-type restaurant. So, we think that, we've demonstrated in our reports, that we should be fine at this particular location with, more than adequate to have the eight parking spaces assigned for retail, just like what you do for the 7-Eleven on Pleasant Valley Road and Ellington Road, that type of facility, where people come in, get their, quickly get their food products, they get pizza or hot dogs or whatever. We think this is not unlike that application, and we'd like you to do that. And that's under Section 649, where you have the ability to modify the required parking, and if it's indeed justified, and we think it certainly is, so we would, we're requesting, respectfully requesting this, so we can get this building, this complex going. Again, it's been six years since you approved it, it's been four years since this was built. Mr. Leonard, who's behind me, has invested a lot of money in this over the years, and we'd like to fill this up and help out a small businessperson at the same time, but it's reasonable application. We don't think there's any risk factor here, and indeed, the applicant, the franchise owner has a letter in your packet, operated the subway that used to be at the center right across the street, where Verizon is, and in that one, they did typical subway volumes of food sales. So, we think that there's minimal risk for this, and we'd like to have you consider modifying your requirement for this particular modification of minimum required parking spaces, because it's justifiable. And we can help Mr. Leonard fill up another space, and it's only 1,530 square feet with a couple employees, and we'd like to get going on this, if we can, with your, at your discretion.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, I'll turn to our Director of Planning, Michelle Lipe.
Just a couple comments. The only concern I have with handling it as a modification to your parking is, next year, Subway goes out and another sub shop wants to go in there that has a different experience. I don't know how you would bring somebody back in to revisit your parking requirements, and they may have a different experience as to what their parking needs. Really, the more appropriate process would be to modify our regulations related to this type of restaurant use. Our regulations currently handle fast-food restaurants and restaurants with equal parking requirement, one space for 50 gross floor area. I did check some of our surrounding towns. Several towns have a different number of parking spaces for a fast-food restaurant versus a sit-down restaurant. I saw six per thousand, I saw 10 per thousand for something like this type of use. So, I guess that would at least keep the standard in the restaurant, and then you would not have the danger of somebody in the future wanting to fill that space with another restaurant use where you've waived away necessary parking.
Okay, thank you. Turn to our Town Engineer, Jeff Dolittle.
I have no additional comments.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, Commissioner Viteri.
Just a quick question, Mr. Demali. With the layout that you have of the parking lot there, how many spaces could you logically assign to Subway of, of, out there?
We can do the, we can do the eight. Eight spaces.
That would be it?
And that would be adequate.
That'd be the max?
Yeah. And that's how the commission approved it, for, at eight, eight spaces for that size space. As retail, right, as retail.
As retail. Commissioner Dexter.
Just to camp on to Commissioner Viteri, and so, if there is, the buildings aren't 100% occupied, right?
Mm-hmm.
And so, if there's overflow from the eight, which nobody would monitor or know about until it's full, until there's a new tenant coming in, right? So, we wouldn't really know if that's working or not. I bring attention to Pasta Vita, that plaza with Hanush. I don't know if you've seen parking there after the nail place came in. It's all about the detail. You know, the nail place came in, and oh my gosh, you can't go to Pasta Vita and find a parking spot. It's terrible. So, I'm hesitant. My follow-up question also is, a couple years ago, we did a lot of back-and-forth approving a cut through the median to take a left. Whatever happened to that?
It's under construction.
Oh, it is?
Mm-hmm.
Oh.
It's, we expect it'll be done the end of the summer?
Yeah?
Yeah, it should be done before the end of the summer.
I did not notice that. That's great.
And I know you have to have it flashing for a couple weeks and stuff like that before you can open.
Because that was expected to help occupancy, right?
Yeah. So, that is, that will be done by mid-year, sometime mid-year. That's in the works.
Okay. Let me get what I want out. I am hesitant to move forward as you recommend. If we make a mistake here, this applicant has no place to put any additional spaces, any reserved spaces. We had a use across the road, Evergreen Run, and that place had too many clientele, and they had no place to park. There were people parking wherever they wanted. There's supposed to be an area for people to drive through, and people were constantly parking in there, blocking people in, and people had to turn around and come around the other way. I really suggest that we move more towards doing a regulation that addresses these type of restaurants. If they're low volume, then let's get some regulations at work, and that way, we're also getting away from the possibility of waivers. Because when you do waivers, waivers are really a control of the zoning board of appeals. I know we have it in our regulation, but we need to minimize waivers as much as possible so that we're minimizing lawsuits. So, I really think the right way to go about it is to make changes to the regulations. But that's going to take a little research also. Commissioner Wagner.
I have, I have the same concern expressed by you and our Town Planner. I have, I'm a big fan of Subway, and I enjoy dropping by a Subway, grabbing a sandwich, and going to a ski area, where the food costs twice as much and it's half as good. But the only thing I could say in terms of regulation is, you know, somehow tie it to the number of tables, because a McDonald's or Dairy Queen actually has a lot of tables. Subways tend to have, you know, a smaller number of tables, so I don't know if we could make it work that way.
And they have been reducing their numbers of seats by a lot.
But, yeah, I think I would look for advice from you to us on how to structure a regulation that protects everybody here, including the other occupants of that site. Should, you know, once this cut-through is open, I think he's going to have better luck selling or renting out space on the site. And so, I agree with everybody who's spoken so far, same issue.
Commissioner LeBlanc?
Yeah, the question I have regarding this is, I realize that Subway's more of a transient type of establishment for a restaurant, and if we approve this and it becomes a restaurant use in there, only worry I'd have is if you actually had a real restaurant commit in place of Subway. I mean, building code-wise, there's a lot more to it, if you actually cook and everything there. You mentioned, Peter, that they're not really cooking there and everything.
Well, yeah. By the way, that was a factor, because we had to go to the Health Department first to prove it, because we have a septic system. We weren't unable to tie into the sanitary sewers on either side.
Correct. So, I'm looking at this in a different light, being Subway than, say, another establishment where you actually cook and do all the different things, where that would require a huge modification to the actual building.
It definitely causes all kinds of other issues.
Right, just wanted to bring that up.
Yep, well said, thank you. I will take it.
Anything else, commissioners? Okay, so...
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I just work with the Director of Planning, Michelle Lipe, and we'll come up with something, come back to you, with something, I think, to address those comments that have been made, and see if there's something where you're amenable to going forward.
Okay.
So, I'll work with Michelle on this, because it's late hour, and might as well do that.
Appreciate that.
So, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Okay, our next item is application 18-23P, 150 Sullivan Avenue. Mr. Tarsinis, how are you?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the commission. Nice to see so many familiar faces after this hiatus we've been on, right? So, basically, looking to move forward on the corner of Ryan Sullivan. I don't have any occupants, looking to do it in phases, that's we have presented before you today, to have a phase-change order. And at the same time, for the purposes of marketability, take just the two front buildings and turn them. That's it. The rear building stays as it is, the entrances, the square footage. As a matter of fact, I think, Michelle Lipe, I had her copy it on an email thread I sent to Bob Arsenault, and there was actually, he laid something out, because we, you know, we went back and forth, we took in some comments, and there was actually more square footage, and I told him, no, no. I want it equal or less to what was approved for the purposes of traffic, uses, and the whole nine yards in regards to this project. So, we're looking to keep everything as it was. The functionality of the project, I think, works better as well. The drive-through, there's much more queuing, there's no possibility at all that the traffic would ever back up into any type of public area. There were some comments regarding, if you look at the building by Manili's, let's call it, the Ry Street building, initially, that was up against the wooded area, the sole... Mr. Shaw brought up a very good point that we had the driveway around, kind of a circle pattern, so we pulled it back out. The drive-through window, again, it was theoretical, was towards the corner of the front of the building on the Sullivan side. We pushed that back, so now there's even queuing for cars leaving the drive-through, not only approaching, but also leaving. Another nice thing is, and it was a valid point, one of the commissioners brought up regarding the neighboring dog pound, that necessarily the animals, and I don't want to quote exactly, but aren't necessarily the friendliest perhaps could be in there. So I've agreed and still in this plan as well, to a solid fence with a, with a, with a bush, arborvitae buffer. But on top of that, turning that building creates an additional barrier. I know I rather, should an animal get loose, I'd rather be in my car than walking to my car, leaving a space as the, the plan was originally. So that's basically it. We're not, again, we're not, we're not changing any uses, sizes, entrances, nothing at all. I have no one for the, for the drive-through. It could, may not even come to fruition. For example, Mexicali had a drive-through that was set up to help marketability, and this is the same instance here. But in hindsight, I probably would have turned a Mexicali building and had the patio in the back. But again, it was a theoretical design. This particular design, we don't have that type of situation because there's the access easement to the left of the Sullivan building, let's call it, next to the dog pound. So we don't have that, with that, we don't have that issue. And basically, we're just looking to turn the two front buildings and maintain a status quo. I, I'm, I'm planning on trying to start this project. I don't really know many banks that would be excited to loan money on a building with no tenants, but I think I have other options, perhaps leveraging another property or something of the like, to go ahead and start this. I already started getting some numbers for construction costs. I'm sure you've all experienced and seen the inflation, and I can tell you that it's between 20 and 80% increase, depending on what you're doing. But I also believe that build it and they will come. I, I, it's, I think it's a terrific location. I think it's extremely busy. I've been out there myself mowing the fields, kind of keeping it maintained, because it is one of the first properties you see when you pull in. And, and, you know, one Saturday I was there after I got done mowing and I was just listening and seeing, and all you can listen to is vehicles. It's just very, very busy. And I, I really think it would be great for the type of space I provide, which is high value, low cost, small business person type space. That, that's what I do. I look for long-term, stable tenants. I maintain the property to a very high level. We stripe every year, we mulch every year, regardless of what it looks like. It just, it just gets done. I think it just gives a fresh ambiance to all the visitors and patrons. And, you know, like they brought up, for example, I was here for the bank application regarding, you know, lifting up a speed bump. I think Commissioner Cavanaro brought up that good point. I do stuff like that regardless. If you look at 915 Sullivan, there's a speed bump there. It's not on the prints, but I put it there because there were people speeding. Okay, I put in speed signs, speed bumps. There's a speed bump here, I put a sign for that so nobody trips over it, right? Because then you get sued. And patrons walking, signs and stuff like that, cameras. So we do what we can to provide a high value, turnkey space too. So if you're a small business person and you want to open a space and there's build-outs and those stuff, you know, I, I could handle that, depending on the person and, you know, and, and being able to fulfill their, their use, so.
Okay. Phil, excuse me for one minute. Just to remind the commission, the first drawing that we're looking at on the plans is what is approved, correct? And the second one is what you're proposing?
Yeah, the approved plan shows the buildings following the street line.
Uh, parallel to Sullivan Avenue.
Yes.
Right.
And Ry. Yep.
Right.
And all I'm looking to do is take those two front buildings and simply turn them.
Right.
Yep. And again, no increase in square footage, no change in access, nothing at all. It was just, and again, I, I, I think, Michelle, you remember that, that email, I mean, he's, he had a layout and it was more square footage, and I said, no, just get rid of it, make, do it exactly what was approved or less.
Okay. Does that complete your presentation?
I think so.
Okay, at this time, we'll turn to our Director of Planning, Michelle Leip.
I really have nothing further at this point. Jeff and myself did work with Phil and his engineer on some tweaks before it got to you. We pulled the drive-through out of the easement area, things like that. There's really nothing more. There, there is still WPCA approval that is needed for this project, but they'll be heading to April for that, and then just finalizing the plans. I think you've already got your Oster approval as well.
All submitted.
Oster's been approved as well, so he's in pretty good shape.
Okay. We'll turn to our Town Engineer, Jeff Dulittle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Michelle said, we looked at the plan and we are satisfied with this change.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, anybody have any issues? Commissioner Wagner.
I seem to recall, well, when we did Mexicali Grill, we insisted on the parking being hidden behind the building and not adjacent to the roadway. And that looks like the way this was originally designed. So I guess I would ask my fellow commissioners how we feel about now having parking up against the road again, instead of behind the buildings.
Commissioner Cavanaro?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the differences between the, the first map and the second map, and I'm just looking at Phase One. I'm not sure, like, I'm, I'm just trying to look at the first one on what designates a, a crosswalk. I assume it's the, the shaded area. And then I compare it to Phase One and the second page. And while I do notice that the, the act, the wide access driveway, it's increased by 10 feet, I, I notice also that there are no crosswalks compared to the, the first one for Phase One, for Building 150, for example. Because I, I, I see a few crosswalks within that Phase One. On the access drive, that was 14 feet. And then I compare it to Phase One for the second one, and I just don't see them. I'm hoping you can just clear that up.
No, sure. So this isn't the submittal plan. We can certainly add a crosswalk in this vicinity here where the existing push button is for the pedestrian crossing across Sullivan. I have no problem with that, and I have no problem elevating it as well, because that is a longer stretch. And if somebody was, were to try to drive in and just cut through, let's just say, I don't know if that would make any sense, but if they would, he could potentially have a speeder. So I would have it posted for speed limit signs, and if I do do a crosswalk, I would like to ramp it, like, like you brought up earlier. I think that's a good idea. There's also that driveway that acts as a buffer, so it's not people parking directly near, you know, in front of the road. There is that driveway as, as an additional buffer versus having cars right up on the street. So we can incorporate all that in the final submittal plans, you know, which is basically going to be exactly what was submitted with additional comments, crosswalk, for example, and relocation of some catch patients. There's no other changes. Drainage, like I said, access, the whole nine yards, impervious, pervious percentages, they're all, they're all, they're all the same.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner LeBlanc?
Yeah, I actually like it, I believe this works. Now, looking at the two different scenarios, the original plan, I see that the building on the back isn't really as marketable, because nobody could see it when you drive by in either Ry Street or Sullivan Avenue. But having the, the configuration and the new proposal, you can see all three buildings, probably would suit you better.
Sure, sure. I mean, I could tell you for experience from 915 Sullivan, I still have two vacancies there after all this time. And that's, the biggest drawback is visibility.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, does anybody want to make any comments to Commissioner Wagner's point as far as seeing the parking from Sullivan Avenue versus the building? Other than the comments that were made by Commissioner LeBlanc, it does give a better visual of the Phase Three building. I'm looking around for red lights, I don't see any. I, I don't have a big problem with it. I know we try to somewhat hide parking, but it seems like it's a, a good layout and a better layout for the drive-through, so I'd be in favor of it. Is that the consensus of the commission? Do we need a motion for that, Michelle, or?
If you have a consensus for the change order that, and you're all good with it, that's fine.
Okay. Okay. So it's the consensus of the commission that we're in favor of it.
All right, terrific.
Okay.
I appreciate it. Thank you for your time, and we'll incorporate that crosswalk, too.
Okay, we're at our 10 o'clock. Did, we want to extend a little longer?
The last applicant informed me they can be done in 15 or less minutes.
Okay.
We'll extend the meeting to 10:15.
Second.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, let's make it 10:20, we got bonds after that. Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes unanimously.
Good evening, Ken Slater. Halloran Sage representing the applicant, and I will speak quickly and we will stay under the 15 minutes.
Turn that microphone towards you.
Yes, I was just staying out of the way so that with me is Peter DeMalle and to my right, Rachel Meyer, who's setting up the presentation for Peter DeMalle, and also Civil Engineer Dan Jamison is here as well. I will just set it up very briefly. If you recall, we were here in November and the commission made a determination in our request, the existing Kent Medical Marijuana, Medical Cannabis facility, we're seeking a license to have it as a hybrid facility. And under your regulations for a use that's not dealt with specifically, your commission looked at it and determined that the proposed use should be treated as a pharmacy use, and we filed our site plan application, well, that was in concert with our site plan application. Planner Michelle Leip had indicated that she thought maybe there had been a change in the uses within the existing plaza that Prime Wellness is in. When we first applied and received our permit, there was some warehouse space. And so Michelle was correct when Peter DeMalle did an assessment of what the various uses were in the existing building, that it's, this existing site is not in compliance with your parking requirements. That's not because of Prime Wellness or anything they're proposing right now, it's the existing conditions of a retail facility or a pharmacy facility in that building. So we set out to find a way to remedy that. And Mr. DeMalle, in a minute, is going to go through comments that were received from the Town Engineer Dulittle, as, as well as Planner Michelle Leip. And one thing I'll comment before turning the floor over to them is that there was a question raised in terms of the 20 spaces that are being provided. There's a shortage of nine under the regulations in order for this existing complex to comply with the parking requirements. So we've provided 20 of them. And there was a question of how that could be managed, and we usually have between seven, maybe 10 employees, and the expectation was that was going to be used for employee parking. But we recognize that, that there may be a need during operation hours for overflow parking for other uses to comply with that. If we just put, you know, six people in and then closed a gate, that other spaces would not be available for, for overflow parking. So what we would propose is that during operational hours, that while we intend to use it primarily for employee parking, that that spaces will be available to any, any persons who are customers in the entire plaza. And then the other thing is, when we're, when our hours are out of operation, we would, we would gate it off. When, when we're not in operation at all, we wouldn't have any customers, any employees, we'd be able to gate it off. Obviously, if somebody was parked there, we would be able to close them in. But that would be the proposal to clarify, I think, some of the questions that were raised about how that parking would be managed. So with, with that, I'll turn it over to, to Peter to jump through some of the other, other comments that have been made.
Thank you, Attorney Slater. Again, for the record, Peter DeMalle, President of Design Professionals. And we have with me, behind me, two project managers, Rachel Meyer, a professional landscape architect, and Daniel Jamison, who's a professional engineer. And they've both participated in the design of this project. So Michelle made abundantly clear to us over time with reports to the commission, also outside of the, your meetings, that parking was the issue with respect to this. The idea is to occupy the same square footage that Prime Wellness occupies now, but to make it into a hybrid facility for the adult cannabis, to add that into the medical marijuana that they have right now. Pharmacist's still there, same staff that want to add on a few people to accommodate the new, the new tenancy with respect to the state licensure. So what we did was, so we did a study, Rachel did that study of the parking requirements for each of the tenancy, tendencies within that building, which is the Northerly Building on the 73 and 75 John Fitch Boulevard, that is subject to this application, and determined that we were, based on today's requirements, we're, and it's an old building, determined that we're short nine, nine parking spaces. There's no room on the site to really add nine parking spaces. So we had to look off-site. Your regulations allow within 600 feet. We're proposing a parking lot on the southerly part of the site, as indicated right now on the screen, with the cursor, for 20 parking spaces. That more than doubles the requirement under zoning, and it's within close proximity, it's half the allowable distance. So, and Michelle had asked for a sidewalk down to there. We have one on the west side. It's about 300 feet long. We also have a, a walkway proposed, crosswalk, it'll be striped from the northwest corner of the building over to that walkway, so you can go to and from the parking. So that's a new sidewalk we're proposing. Also, we heard that there was a comment from the police chief with respect to asking for a crosswalk be indicated between the two buildings. We're amenable to doing that. Michelle asked about why there are some cones on three spaces on the north side. That's because during COVID, people were queuing outside, pedestrians were queuing outside with safe distancing, and didn't, and they were concerned, Prime Wellness people were concerned about cars backing up and hitting, striking a pedestrian as they're backing up as they're queuing in line around the parking lot. So that's no longer the case. Those cones have been removed, those parking spaces are fine. If there's a concern with respect to, we've heard town staff may be concerned about the, the width of the area there, maybe, maybe there's concern there. We're amenable to making that one way if need be. We have certainly more than ample room for that, as far exceeds the standard for one way, if you'd like it. I think we get down to maybe 22 feet is the width at the narrowest point, as, instead of the normal 24, existing site. But we can make that one way, so, one way going around from Route 5 going around to the back of the building. The idea is to have employee parking for Prime Wellness down there, but also, as Attorney Slater indicated, we would also have it available for others to meet the needs of the complex once they've met the needs of their, for their employees and others. So that, that summarizes what we're doing. Oh, we have an EV station, one, one EV space in there, a full, full charged space.
What you have.
And it's handicapped accessible, that's van accessible. And we also have two light standards there, two trees, we meet the interior parking requirements. So we have landscaping also along the frontage, as you can see with shrubs. So the storm drain is being handled. If we, if you want to get in the weeds, we have the two experts here designed it, the landscape architect and the engineer. We're going recharge system there for this. We have excellent soil conditions there, some of the best in South Windsor, and we have no concern whatsoever about recharging in that location. So if you want to get into it, Daniel Jamison is here for any further detail. What am I missing? That's about it for, in summary.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
At this time, we'll turn to our Director of Planning, Michelle Leip.
Thank you. Again, I did provide you this report, just a brief summary. So this is a request for a site plan approval under Section 6.4.7 to create off-site parking for 20 cars for, on 45 John Fitch Boulevard for the Prime Wellness facility at 75 John Fitch Boulevard. This is in the general commercial zone. The criteria under 6.47 is that it has to be within 600 feet of the primary business and not crossing a public road without a waiver. It does meet that criteria. They've met all the zoning requirements related to interior parking, impervious coverage. They are showing two new light poles, 25 feet in height with full cutoff fixtures. They have added the sidewalk along the westerly side of the parking area as requested. As you come up the northerly side of the building, it, it does get kind of tight there for two-way traffic. They show about six parking spaces along that northerly boundary. We'd be recommending maybe the elimination of maybe three of those spaces. If people are walking up that side of the building, you only have a three-foot sidewalk there, so it, it does get kind of tight and people, you know, it's a little pinch point there. So now that they have 20 spaces when they only needed nine additional, if they lost a couple there, they would still be within their parking requirements. There are no regular wetlands on site, nor are there disturbance over half acres, so wetlands approval was not required. I guess the only question I had for the applicant, and I understand that the goal is for the Prime Wellness folks, but in the event Prime Wellness leaves, is this parking but in the event Prime Wellness leaves, is this parking area still available for this particular commercial unit? Or is it tied specifically to Prime Wellness? Thank you.
The expectation is that it, that it will tie to the, the land. I have not seen the, the final executed version, but when I say the land, the Peter Chirillo property, so that Prime Wellness would be a party to the lease, but it would also, it would run primarily to the landlord.
That's what we would hope it to be. Thank you.
Okay, we'll turn to our Town Engineer, Jeff Doolittle.
Thank you. So just, I, I think the parking lot is a great addition, just some details. So the pedestrian walkway along the north side of the building is very narrow. That needs to be clearly marked and maybe expanded a little bit with striping and/or signs, so everybody knows that's where pedestrians are walking to get into the building, the entrance is in the front. As Michelle said, of the six existing parking spaces in northeast corner, we recommend maybe three nearest the building be removed. So again, to avoid the pitch point for traffic getting in and out, and for any pedestrians that, again, are walking towards the entrance to the building. I suggested a stop sign be put at the exit from the proposed parking lot. You notice the circulation is one way through that parking lot. They talked about the, how that parking lot will operate, asked for detail for the four-foot by two-minute sidewalk. And the plans show a large drainage pipe from John Fitch Boulevard heading west, under the area where the parking lot is going to be proposed. I asked if any easement or drainage right-of-way be shown for that pipe. I suspect it's to the state, but there wasn't clear indication on the plans. And those are my comments.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioners, I had a few questions, if you don't mind me starting. Why a four-foot sidewalk in the back when the town standard, I believe, is now five? Okay. Thank you. I, I noticed, visiting the site, that the dumpsters are where the proposed sidewalk is. Are those planned to be relocated? There's four dumpsters and two grease dumpsters.
For the record, my name is Rachel Meyer. As Peter said, project manager with Design Professionals and professional landscape architect as a part of this project. We did offset the front edge of the sidewalk by about 10 to 12 feet. Based on the aerial image and our survey, we seemed to be avoiding the dumpsters if it is necessary to adjust the center line of the walk to avoid those dumpsters, so they can remain in place. We are happy to do so.
So you're proposing that the dumpsters stay where they are and the sidewalk just offsets behind them?
Behind it, correct, to the west of the dumpsters, yes.
Okay. Are those dumpsters supposed to have enclosures?
I'm not sure it was required in the 70s when this was built, but today dumpsters are on concrete pads and screened, new dumpsters.
So is the applicant planning to meet that?
I, I can't speak to that in that I was dealing with the, the Prime Wellness application, which gave rise to the additional parking. But with what Mr. Chirillo does with those parking, with those dumpsters, I can pass that information on to him, but I couldn't make a representation on his behalf.
Okay. I, I had, just looking at the plans in our package, I had concerns about lighting and that possibly being lit at night. What are the hours of the business and now, and what are the hours going to be after, if it's approved to a hybrid?
Yeah, right, right now, Prime Wellness operates 9 to 6, Monday through Friday, and 9 to 4 on Saturdays. So they're done, so they're not late. There's a chance, they haven't discussed this internally yet to, in depth, they haven't even applied for the license.
Right.
But they may extend those hours a bit in the evening, but not real late. And that is illuminated, you know, for security and other reasons.
Yep. Is the lighting back there conforming? Because I saw some big, like CLMP spotlights in the existing. I didn't take a picture of them, but I had concerns about.
Yeah, we, we, we did not evaluate the complex, the two-bellied complex for existing lighting.
Well.
Typically, when a rehab happens and they come in and we do additions and things like that, we address lighting. But with this application, you, I think unless they're replacing the lighting, we wouldn't be looking for the.
And we're not expanding our space at all. It's the same footprint of tendency for Prime Wellness.
The new lighting is full cutoff lighting.
Yep.
Okay, because there's at least two large lights there that are, I believe, non-conforming.
Chairman, we can certainly look at those lights to make sure they're not new, like in the recent year or so, because any new lighting should have conformed. So we do have a couple spots on Route 5 where that has occurred, so.
We'd be glad to pass that on to Peter Chirillo, the owner, if you'd like.
Yeah, the only other concern I believe I had was the parking lines have really been obliterated. They're gone. So it really should be restripped so that people can see where the parking is.
Okay, okay. Can't make it approval condition then.
Okay, I just have one more thing. I want to know staff's concern about the use of this after hours. I would think that it would be a benefit. Are they worried, is the applicant worried about liability for that after hours? Or what's, why would it be gated off after hours?
Well, there are some activities on site that go beyond what hours will be, the, the hours of our client.
Correct.
There will be activities. And, and the understanding is that it's available for parking, if, if there's a need for parking there, that they can use this facility. They're not proposing to gate it off.
I saw on the drawing in this miniscule print that there was a note on it that said something like, oh, "Prime Wellness Permit Parking Only, All Others Would Be Towed."
Yeah, that decision, they made a decision, our clients made a decision today. Attorney Slater was in council.
Yeah, and now, in response, in response to comments that were made, Ken Slater, for the record, that, that the planner had as well as other comments, it became clear that it would make sense that that be available for overflow parking when Prime Wellness is open. The only thing we want to reserve, and frankly, it might never be gated, the only thing we wanted to reserve the right is when Prime Wellness is, is not in operation, that, that they could. So if Prime Wellness took on the, the main responsibility, they were concerned about after-hours liability, and it wasn't going to be anything they could control because they were closed, they would want to have the right to be able to do that. But it might not ever happen. But what was, what should be clear on the record is that during the times that it is operational, that any spaces is going to be available to, to any users within the, the complex.
Yeah, my only other concern is, I believe this is going to be a lease arrangement, and what happens if the owner of the land terminates that lease?
Well, frankly, the same thing would happen right now. If, if this isn't resolved, your enforcement officer could issue an enforcement order against the existing owner that this is not being operated in compliance with the zoning regulations. So if somehow they let that lapse so that they did not have enough parking space, just as it is today, they could be found to be in violation and that they would have to evict the tenant or do something else to remedy the problem.
Okay. Okay, Commissioners, Commissioner Wagner?
Just one other question. The sidewalk is kind of a new area. How's the snow removal being handled on the sidewalk? And is it impacted by snow removal in the parking lot, since we had a big discussion of snow removal earlier?
Like I mentioned earlier, the sidewalk is offset about 10 feet at a minimum from the edge of pavement. And areas where there are not currently dumpsters, we can provide snow storage in those areas.
To the west, to the west of the parking lot's open as well, to the west side of the sidewalk, it's open.
I guess I'm just concerned that, you know, plow operator is going to push snow in the most convenient direction, which will be toward the sidewalk. I don't know if there's enough room and still keep the sidewalk functioning.
Well, if it's offset 10 feet, they should.
If it's 10 feet enough.
They're going to be responsible for not only plowing, it's the same contractor, and also maintaining the sidewalk, be clear of
Okay, great.
of snow as well. So if they pile it up there, they'd be making a lot more work for themselves.
That answers my question. Do we need to extend again?
Yes, we do.
Move, we extend to 10:30.
Second.
Motion, do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, so Commissioners, any other questions, comments, concerns? Hearing and seeing none. What is, we do have some approval conditions on the back. If somebody would like to do a motion? Anyone, anyone? Commissioner LeBlanc?
I motion for the proof, application 21-56P, Prime Wellness Parking Lot. The following stipulations, most of these are standardized, right, one through nine, italicizes, one I should read off?
Yep.
Okay.
Just number three you need to.
Okay. Number three, a landscape bond in the amount of $3,000 is required and must be submitted prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy if work is not completed. And number 10, engineering comments dated March 14th, 2022, must be incorporated into the final plans.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Commissioner Vettiri? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion, questions, comments? Commissioner Dexter, I see your light on. Oh, okay. Hearing and seeing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Yeah, we went through the striping. What's that? Okay, long as they're not worth 25 bucks. Okay. We have bonds. There's three bonds which were provided. I think we have them here, right on the thing. If somebody would like to move those, Commissioner Dexter? Oh.
Alan, you want to?
Oh, yeah, Commissioner Paving Nero. I just saw her light. I was looking that way.
So I, I have the one from March 8th. Is that the one I'm going over?
Correct.
Okay. So the bond of 16-50P Hartford Truck E&amp;S, amount 5,000, reduction 5,000, balance zero.
These are inland wetland agency conservation commission?
Yep.
Just for the.
20-40P Progressive Sheet Metal E&amp;S, amount 3,000, reduction 3,000, balance zero. And 20-44P Costco E&amp;S, amount 30,000, reduction 30,000, balance zero.
And just for the record, E&amp;S is erosion and sedimentation. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion, questions, comments, hearing none? All those in favor of the motion of the bond reduction approvals say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes unanimously.
One more bond, subdivision bond, 20-56P Vintage Hills 2, amount 93,000, reduction 83,000, balance 10,000.
Okay, we have motion. Do we have a second? Go ahead, Commissioner Wagner?
Second.
I think Commissioner LeBlanc got the second. He said it first.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Darned.
We have motion and a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? I see lots of lights on. What's that mean? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes unanimously.
Minutes.
Okay, minutes. We have minutes. I see January 25th, February 8th, February 15th. I'm all fine with the March 8th one. I, the ones I saw were draft, so I'd rather not do those until, we don't have those here tonight, right? I, I'd rather get, get a chance to take a look at them, even if we do.
Did email those out, out to you guys this afternoon. I did not anticipate.
Oh.
We just put it on the agenda in case we had time to get to it.
So at this time, if everyone's comfortable, Commissioner Wagner?
I, I wouldn't want to do the March 8th. I, I'm halfway through it.
Okay. So, Commissioner LeBlanc? No? Okay. If everybody's comfortable, we can accept the January and February minutes by consensus? Agreed?
Agreed.
Okay.
Before, I'm sorry, are you gonna, I was going to have a little comment before we adjourn, but go ahead.
Okay, Michelle, did you have anything? Okay, Steve, did you have anything?
So, yeah, for many years, we've been trying to encourage Evergreen Walk to finish the walkways in the woods behind the, behind Costco and all the apartments and so on. I did take a walk on that. It's beautiful. I encourage you all to get in there. I think the easiest place is to park at the ECHN area across Tamarack Drive and go down the hill from there. Beautiful.
The good news, they're going to keep reinvesting in that walkway, too. They've got some good plans for future.
There's also good access next to the Costco gas station.
Okay. I do want to warn everybody, I did take that walk last year, or last season. And I was on it at that time. The walk was really impassable because of the storm that happened and all the flooding and trees down and everything. But in the half an hour I was on it, I had like nine ticks on me when I got off, so just be aware. Okay, with that, a motion to adjourn would be in order?
I make a motion to adjourn three minutes early.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you.